All right, welcome everybody to our Tuesday, March nineteenth city council meeting. This is our six o'clock workshop will be going over a couple of planning type items here. We're waiting on our director of planning and engineering services to to pop in here. In the meantime, I'll do a quick roll call for workshop. Councilmember Van Orman. Councilmember Ball. Mayor Pro Tim Cargill. Not on that's okay. Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
That's member Dunn.
Happy to be here.
Councilmember Kennedy. All right, Councilmember Kurtz will be joining us a little bit late. There is a program at school, so family first. So I guess we'll go ahead and get started. Lisa, are you gonna kick us off? I don't think that's on.
Lisa Key. Good evening, Mayor Councilmembers. So we are going to be talking about the aquifer protection area and the reauthorization. There was a packet of information that was included in your council packets related to the institution of this. It happened in nineteen originally in nineteen eighty-five. It went before the voters of Spokane County to create to create the aquifer protection area and fund for this.
Hello? Okay, go ahead, Lisa.
All right, sorry about that. And it was it the the funding for this area was established for a twenty year period. It was at the time, the city of Liberty Lake, of course, was not incorporated. And the but the area which later became our incorporated city was part of that original authorization. In twenty in two thousand and four, the county approached the city. We'd now been incorporated and was bringing forward a reauthorization of the creation of the aquifer protection area. And city council at that time did request to be included. And so it was reauthorized by the voters for another twenty years. So we're coming up on the deadline. We're approaching our twenty years again. I think this sun sets in December thirty first of twenty twenty-five. And so Rob Lindsay, who is the environmental services director for Spokane County, approached me and wanted to speak with all of you about the reauthorization. It actually is very timely because the Aquafor Protection Fund is part of how we fund our stormwater protection and maintenance program here in the city of Liberty Lake. So as we're talking about stormwater following this, keep in mind that right now this aquifer protection funding is actually helping to fund our stormwater management system. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rob Lindsay, who can give you a lot more detail on how the program is structured.
Thanks for joining us.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Good evening, Mayor Councilmembers. Again, my name is Rob Lindsay. I'm the Environmental Services Administrator in Spokane County Public Works. I've been with Spokane County for approximately twenty years overseeing the water resources program at Spokane County and directly overseeing the the Aquafor Protection Area Funds, particularly those that were approved in two thousand and four up until now. And when with those funds, Spokane County has been conducting an aquifer monitoring program. And we also have our education and outreach program as well, which which we're very proud of. And I'll tell you a little bit more about that later on in my presentation. I really don't want to speak too long. I just really want to give you an update about where we are in terms of renewing this. Again, I want to thank Lisa for 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 giving a very concise background. And I want to thank Liberty Lake and the community for for your support. Because it really is an investment in in our long term environmental awareness and stewardship and 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 we believe very strongly Spokane County that that education is where it starts. So I can tell you that that every year we serve well over five thousand. Last year, we were closer to eight thousand students from the valley that go through our our environmental education program. Every fifth grade student in Central Valley and now East Valley has been going through a program at Liberty Lake Park that we've been conducting in coordination with with Central Central Valley School District and now East Valley School District. And now we also have the the Doris Morrison Learning Center out at Salties, which has been very popular. And we also have a Water Resource Center, which is at our treatment facility downtown. The monitoring program that we conduct has been very valuable in terms of identifying long term trends in water quality. We test for things that are that are our water purveyors don't. And we look for for things like nutrients, chlorides, nitrates. And I can tell you that while we our aquifer is still very clean, we still have elevated levels of chlorides, nitrates and other contaminants, particularly along the the borders of our aquifer. And and so we communicate regularly with with the regulatory agencies as well as our water providers. You know, to to keep everybody aware of what's going on in our water in our aquifer. And we're very lucky to have, I believe, a monitoring program where we can evaluate trends and identify these problems before they come insurmountable. Contaminated aquifers are virtually impossible to clean up. And and many times then require treatment at the wellhead. And I'm not saying we're going there, but I'm just saying that that we have a program that can help us identify ahead of time. So the the funding mechanism itself is fifteen dollars a year per household. Our dollar twenty-five per month. There are slightly higher charges for commercial establishments, and it's based on the size of the pipe that comes into their facility. But again, the 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 charges for facilities and commercial establishments, you know, aren't that that high relatively speaking. And it's been fifteen dollars for well, the last two APA cycles. And for this particular cycle, we would we would request a fifteen dollar a year per parcel. Again. And and again, that that has been able to to generate sufficient funds such that we're able to to conduct our aquifer monitoring and and conduct our 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 education and outreach activities and then return money to the communities. We've been returning to the city of Liberty Lake on the order of fifty to sixty thousand dollars a year. And again, that's based on a proportional basis on the number of parcels. For comparison, the the city of Spokane Valley has been getting closer to about five hundred thousand dollars a year. And and also, you know, Lisa mentioned that that the city of Liberty Lake is relying on on some of these funds to implement the water, the stormwater program. The city of Spokane Valley points directly to our education program to check the box for their education requirements for their stormwater program as well. So so I mean, we're all working together on on this. So I'm here basically to to share information. Where where are we? We've reached out to the city of the valley. We've reached out to the city of Spokane. And now to you. And the city of Spokane, I understand from staff and I just spoke with with our public works director today, who spoke with their public works director. The the staff and the administration are interested to do this. They have a lot on their plate right now with the new mayor. And I have not been able to get in front of their committee yet. But they are interested. They they recognize the value of the program. And and they're interested. The city of Spokane Valley, last I heard, they're not as interested right now. It just recently passed a a stormwater fee for their community. And and their their interest in going to the community and for an additional ask is low right now. We are you know, we're available to to communicate with them. But just telling you where we are on that right now. As far as the 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 timing of the election, initially, we were hoping, hoping is the key word, to put it on the ballot later on this summer in August, which would have required, which would require for me leading this effort to get all my homework done and have everything to the elections office in early May. I don't think that's going to happen now. I think we've been waiting on, you know, the city of Spokane, and we knew that that way. There there is another opportunity in November. And then also in February of twenty twenty-five. Which ballot we go on, I still have to respond to my board as well. I've I've met with our board twice now about this, giving them an update. They're very supportive of this, but they're also recognizing that we need to engage with our municipalities. And there's interest in potentially including the West Plains as as that area that part of the West Plains includes a service area of the city of Spokane. The airport is up there. That's part of the city of Spokane. So there may be some interest to include that. So we're in motion here, but I'm intending to move forward and and I'm and I'm here to answer questions about the program, about what we've done, where we're going. And I'll leave it at that at that at that point, but likely, I just don't see it going on the ballot in August. But I'm hopeful that we could get it on. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. You have any questions? Councilmember Dunn?
So just to recap my perception, we are currently a participant in the Aquafor Protection Program. Yes, and that we had been since the, I think, oh, for initializing period. Correct. For us to continue to participate in the program, is that an action of us as a city council?
What I would ask of you is a is to provide a resolution authorizing the inclusion of your jurisdiction into the into the APA. And actually, in the packet that Lisa provided is a copy of the resolution oh, four dash seventy-one that was enacted at the time. And that's really all that we need from you at this point.
I just offer as an observation, both my now college age students were students through the elementary elementarys here to which the program at the Liberty Lake County Park is a fond recollection. Both from the perspective of an educational opportunity and then actually to discover things in their community with respect to water quality and how water quality affects the life of everyone around us. Yeah. So eyewitness and recognize the benefits, the education program provided by the county programs.
Well, I appreciate that. And I would just add to that, that, you know, I was born and raised in Spokane. And I remember when somebody came to my elementary school and and talked to me about our aquifer and our water supply. It was very impactful. As a matter of fact, I wound up studying geology, I'm a hydrogeologist by by profession. And 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 it's it's encouraging to think, and I appreciate what you're saying about your college age, you know, your adult children, because twenty years ago, those students that were ten years old in fifth grade at the time are thirty years old. And many of them probably have their own children now. And so it's I I see generational change, and it's very encouraging. And it's an honor to be a part of it. So thank you very much.
So I read this with great interest because I just want to say that right now, I think, well, it's happening right now. Water is going to be a more valuable resource than oil. And I mean, if human beings don't have clean water, we're toast. So I am completely in support. And at fifteen dollars, I'd ask Kyle what the breakout was. He wasn't quite sure, but fifteen dollars per year.
Per household. Yeah, yeah, for for typical household. Yeah. And it's on your it's on your tax statement.
Right. Yeah. And that's included in the county portion. I mean, yeah, I don't see how we cannot do this. I mean, we've got to have clean water for everybody.
Appreciate it. So thank you.
You approach him, go ahead.
Quick question for you, Ron. One, if the city Spokane Valley doesn't participate, is it enough for you guys to still have the amount you need to be effective?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah. And indeed, the current APA, the city of Spokane is not participating.
Oh, okay.
It was twenty years ago when when we went to invite them. They were looking at at a sizable street bond and and they had some other ballot measures they were sensitive to. So they didn't put it on the ballot. So currently, the city of Spokane is not participating in the APA.
So would this be up for a countywide election or only in the municipalities in the areas that requests to be part of the APA and have it?
It is not countywide. It is. It is specific to the area that has the potential to impact the aquifer. So basically, it's in the whole valley, as you could see. And then the the sides, the 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 slopes that that drain down into the valley. And then even up north around Meade and a little bit into Peon Prairie is included in the APA.
And does Kootenay County participate in this at all?
No, it's it's this is purely a Washington state because this APA is authorized under Washington State RCW thirty-six. So it's a state approved funding.
Okay.
Well, then how does it appear on the ballot? I mean, how do it does it go on? Everybody's ballot, but then say?
No. And so what we think, good question. We've broken it out by for convenience, the boundary is identified by voting precincts.
Oh.
So it's easy. So we can, when we, when I turn all my homework in, I'm going to tell the elections office which precincts should have this 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 ballot measure presented to them. So only those within those affected precincts.
And if it if it appears on the ballot, and let's say Spokane Valley decides not to participate, then do they forego, I assume they forego the amount that they got back?
If the city of the valley does not participate, they will no longer be able to point to our programs checking the box for there's the stormwater education. And yeah, there would be no more payments going.
Yeah, okay.
But if they don't, and the city of Spokane is is interested, we'll go for it. But we need at least one of those municipalities.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Just one. Um, in promotion and marketing, I've seen AquaDuck.
Yeah.
Is that a project of APA?
You know, AquaDuck is is a is a is a project of both the APA and the it's called the Spokane Aquafor Joint Board, which is a collection of all the water purveyors, you know, who banded together to create a regional wellhead protection program. Because basically, they're all pulling out of the same bucket, right? You know, being the Spokane Valley.
I just think that has impact and meaning. So go AquaDuck.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
And just one more question about timing. So would you need us to do this ASAP? Is there a kind of a target date that you're trying to get the councils and the cities on board by or or what are what are you looking for?
Well, if I told you that I was I was on track to to have this on the ballot in August, I would ask to have that by the end of April.
Okay.
But I don't honestly think that we're going to be able to do that. But I will say the sooner the better.
Yeah, sure.
I do have one more question.
Sure.
Councilmember Spencer was.
Yes, thank you. Kind of to piggyback off Mayor Pro Tim Cargill's questions. So you say you've got to have at least Spokane or Spokane Valley participate?
We yes, we.
Okay, so regardless of which one participates, our rate per household wouldn't be impacted?
No.
Okay.
No. And and then again, and your proportional share would would not be impacted either.
Yeah, I think that's an important fact to get out to our residents when this comes comes out. Councilmember Ball.
Oh, I just had a question. Said that the aquifer is clean, but there's still some.
Along the edges, you bet.
Well, what is it on the edges?
Yeah, we're seeing chlorides, chlorides, you know, and again, those become from like rose salts and things like.
From what? Oh, rose.
Rose salt, oh. Things like that. We are seeing some elevated levels of nutrients in the greenode Otis Orchards area. So like in northeast of the aquifer, and some of that's coming across from Idaho. Our friends in Idaho, we, you know, we talked to them about their monitoring. They're seeing elevated levels of nitrates in my west post falls area. And so, yeah, we're we see trends.
All right. And also, Councilmember Kennedy?
Thank you.
Hello. I understand it's fifteen dollars per household. And did I understand correctly earlier, you said we receive a refund back to the city?
Yeah, the city does. The cities receive refunds on the order of fifty thousand dollars every year.
Okay, so my next my important question would be then, if the Spokane Valley did not participate and city of Spokane did not participate, will that affect the refund?
That we would qualify for. Neither one of them participate, then we probably aren't going to try to fly the kite.
Well, what?
We we won't. I mean, i- if if we can't have at least one of the municipalities, then we don't have critical mass.
Right, I understand. So clarification is that we'd still be having fifteen dollars per household, which which I don't think is a huge amount of money, but more than likely, we would not participate in any rebate back on those fees.
I'm not sure I understood what you just said.
If it doesn't go forward, there won't be fifteen dollars.
Yeah, if it doesn't go forward, there, yeah.
It's dead.
I won't be here.
Yeah. No.
Yeah.
All right. So I I guess if I don't hear any objections, we can get the staff going on an updated ordinance resolution, excuse me, to bring back the next meeting or the subsequent one after that.
Okay.
Doesn't look like I have to see any any heads shaking, so.
Did I answer your question right sufficiently? Thank you. Okay.
Great. Doesn't look like many other questions. We appreciate you being here and answering questions and kind of giving us an update on where we are.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. All right. So up next, still the Lisa Show. Stormwater Master Plan Capital Improvement Program.
On a related topic, we've got KJ Hanley here with Parametrics, who wants to talk to you a little bit more about our stormwater master plan and the capital improvement plan, which is really foundational to the rate study. And so and as you as you can see, this is an important aspect of it, the aquifer protection, because that is how we're funding about half of our program right now. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to KJ, and he's gonna.
And for those of you who haven't met KJ, you've heard his name for years.
It's really good. We'll we'll assume, right?
Yes.
All right. So I guess the the first thing, just to touch a little bit, is this, like Lisa said, this will lead into the actual cost when we'll do the rate study that'll follow up. So what we're just looking for here is the actual projects we've outlined and then kind of the programmatic of what's going to happen. So jump to the next slide. Thank you. So I just kind of put this, you guys already have this in the packet, but we just I wanted to summarize. So we kind of want to review. We have four site specific capital improvement projects identified. And then two programmatic, which are more just things that we can easily scale per a distance or a unit across the city. And then the purpose tonight is just to kind of get your guys' input on the site specific ones we have. Review the general information and assumptions and formats, because these will be used moving forward. Once this plan's done, get updated regularly. And then present the programmatic approaches where we're kind of looking at some of the items that'll get repaired and how that would work. Make sure you guys like the concept of where we're going. And then see if there's anything else we missed or anything else we want to include or add to it. Uh, next one, please. So first thing we'll just talk about is the site specific drainage ones, which there's four of them. Next, please. So these are going to be really hard to read, no matter how I tried to play with, but they are in your packet. So the first one here, we'll talk about this one is Country Vista on the north side, just across from the fire station, essentially. There's an existing swale there that we've seen several pictures of maintenance crew out there and waiters up to their hips almost and out into the road. So essentially, what we're kind of doing is we identify the problem. And you see, we have two sheets. So we have a summary sheet on the front where we kind of try to give a picture, some details, some explanations, explain why it's an important project and what we want to accomplish. And then the second page for each one of these is where we just break down a cost. So these are, again, real preliminary planning level costs. So we have contingencies. We're kind of just making some assumptions of percentages of what we're doing. But we are basing the actual cost off of real bid prices that we've seen in the last few years. So they are based off real numbers and scaled. So so this was an example, like we said, it's essentially, you know, conceptually to remove over X the swale because it's clogging up, not working, get some geotech out there, rebuild it, add some dry wells, and then reconstruct so we can get the water off the road. So we'll go ahead and we can jump. We'll go through all four of them. And then if you guys have questions, pop up as you're going. So we'll go to the next one. So this is Sprague, Avon, Multer Road. So this is right at the boundary in between the city of Liberty Lake and the county going to the south. And again, we've seen Lisa shared several resident complaints on this one of some of the big events that rushes down Multer. And it'll rush down Sprague, jump the curbs and keep going down. So at this one, we're looking at how to pick it up, put some structures, do some drainage around the corners to pick it up. The hard part we have is it's really tight right away. There's not a lot of room. So one of the things we're looking at is we'll see some more of these on Sprague is ConTech makes some new technologies that meet some of the DOE's treatment requirements. So it's it's a looks like a giant manhole, like a forty inch diameter manhole. But it has infrastructure in it that creates essentially kind of like a swirl effect that spins the water out. So all of the debris or any of the materials and particles get caught and trapped and dropped. And then the water comes out without the sediment, which meets the treatment requirements to then go to a dry well. And it's still just a vector truck clean. So as opposed to some of the ones you've seen or people have seen, they have filters and different things you have to maintain, which creates a headache for all the maintenance people. So we'll jump to the next one. So this one's Neyland, again, button up right as it goes down into Spokane County. So this is the hillside as you're dropping down, and you can see evidence, and we've seen complaints that right is around the corner on the inside corner there. The water tends to gather and blow out to the corner and go into the private property there around there. So we're looking at ways of slowing the water down, picking it up and getting it off to where it should be. So there is some existing drainage and infrastructure that's been put in years ago. But it doesn't seem to be catching enough or functioning properly. So we're looking at again, doing some of the same, putting some structures and then collecting what we can. And we did earlier on some of these, we talked with the county. And they were interested about participating or seeing how we could help if there's a joint effort when it comes to it. The last one here. So this is Sprague Ave, east of Multer. So basically, between the last two projects we looked at. So as we've been looking at doing the overlay or doing fixing for Sprague to fix the road, we noticed there's little to no drainage on the road, no drainage improvements. So right now, a lot of the runoff as it's going on the south side of the road, just rounds the corner and goes down county roads more towards the lake. So what we're looking at doing on this one is just trying to capture what is on city property, the city right away, and try to dispose of and handle our runoff rather than pass it down to the county or do others. And again, this is the same, some of those contact type structures, so we can try to stay within right away and keep easy maintenance. So I guess, do we want to, is there any questions on any of the four we have of anything up there before we jump to the more of the broader picture on it?
Mayor Pro Tim, go ahead.
I just have a quick question about the first one, Country Vista, I believe it was. And I I think you mentioned this, but I just want to make doubly sure. I'm not sure if we can go back to that slide. The very first one. There we go. So this is the area right by the the fire station back one side. There we go. Right by the fire station on Country Vista and like probably everyone else, I noticed that when we have the big rain events, I mean, we've got huge pools of water in the roadway. So is this going to completely eliminate that? Or will it just kind of reduce that? But we're still going to have, because of the way the roadway comes down in that area, are we still going to have an issue until we reconstruct the road?
Shouldn't. This should this should get rid of that. So the we we did look at early on probably back in two thousand and sixteen, when I first started working with the city, we did a survey of that area to try to see if there was grading issues. And the grading's fine. So what it is, is the water is so the city a few years back went and you could see they put those concrete channels to try to get the water off. So the water gets off better, but it gets to the pond and it just isn't perking.
Yeah.
So it's just cooling up until it spills out. So this would be to drop the elevation of that, get enough depth that we can fully get all the water off. So it should be able to get off the. it should be able to get off the road, and I don't think it's a grading issue.
Great, thank you.
Councilman Dunn.
Um, question maybe, uh, Lisa, remind me, Sprague east of Multer, that's a big CapEx project for us, right? It's not just an overlay? As far as just paving portion, I think we've got.
It is, uh, so right now, we're, we're looking at the design of that, we're, um, it, we're looking at, um, kind of like what we did on Kramer Parkway, it is, it's gonna be more than an overlay, there will be parts of it where we have to do a full-blown repair, but big part of it is actually the stormwater piece. One of the reasons why the road is in the condition that it is, is because there's virtually no stormwater, and I did want to make a point if the, and I'm sure that you all caught this, I know KJ didn't say it specifically, but the reason why we have to deal with the stormwater, even if the structures are going to be south in the county or the impacts are in the county is, guess what, we own Sprague Avenue, that's our stormwater, it's our responsibility to treat it.
That's great, I just recognized fortuitous timing as being able to resolve roadway issues along with stormwater issues. Thanks.
Right, and, and I will say also with that, we have found that the road is very thin in the places, which is why it's doing what it is.
Not surprised.
Yeah.
Alright, anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question.
Linda, go ahead.
Um, could you just kind of explain in, you know, non-engineering terms, dry wells? What, I mean, what is, what, I see the picture, but is it just like an infiltration type thing?
Exactly, so a dry well is essentially the, a hole to put water in. It's just a giant concrete structure, and you fill rock, you fill like a one-inch to three-inch river rock, round rock all the way around it in a giant, a burrito wrap of fabric, and you bury it.
Is that the official engineering definition?
That's what I do, it's a hole you put water in.
Yep.
Especially out here where you have good soils, if you get in other areas, it's not so easy.
Oh, that works for me, thank you.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? There's no other questions?
Okay, wanna? Move forward and a few more? Okay, so now these'll, we have, so far we have two programmatic, so these are the ones I was talking about where they're more kind of bigger picture, we could apply a unit or a scale and apply it throughout, so we budget per year, so next one. So, so this is swale improvements, everyone living in the city should be able to identify these pretty easy, so Country Vista, any of the different neighborhoods, um, the swales get constructed over years, ten, twenty years, the sediment builds up, the grass builds up and grows taller into where the stormwater can't exit the road anymore. Or it gets to an inlet and it's, gets really shallow, so it's hard to see, but in the one picture in the bottom left, there is a dry well in there that is completely, it's actually below the grass level, and when that was designed, that dry well would have been sticking six inches up above the bottom of the grass. So over all the years of it, it just keeps filling up, so it's not working the way it should, to short-circuit, it should have to pool all the way up in the grass, then spill into the dry well. So this is one we would just kind of look at, you know, how do we assign a per-square footage or a linear feat, some sort of a unit price, so that we can look at how much does the city want to take on when we start doing the actual budgeting stuff? We'd go, okay, we want to budget this much per year, and now the city can start working on tracking through GIS or whatever they want to do of how we want to prioritize and slowly chip away at it to keep doing annual maintenance on it.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I'm done.
Uh, just to kind of paraphrase the observation, in this example image, the actual, I'll call it drain feature would have been, I'd say, above surface in the originally presented design.
Yep.
Okay. Um, that particular image is great, and it's very familiar to me as a location. Is that city property or homeowner association property, or?
That one could be a homeowner, that's some of those, they're all over, I mean, Country Vista has the same thing everywhere on it, so we have it in the GIS, it was trying to pick one that was a real
Yeah.
easy image to show, so.
Um, so as far as improvements of that, is it the city taking action on private property then, or?
Not in my take, it would be the city would be doing the ones on your own property, but as part of this, it might very well be do we want to give notification or let HOAs know on ones that they're responsible for?
Yeah.
So the other thing that you should be aware of is that in some of the HOAs, um, we actually have shared stormwater facilities with both the HOA and, um, the city. In those particular cases, um, the agreement that we have had all along, and it's reflected in conditions of approval, it's reflected in how uh, how easements are granted on the plat, the responsibility for the above-ground maintenance goes with the HOA, but below the ground, i.e. the dry wells, et cetera, are the responsibility of the city, city, keeping in mind that we do also charge, um, uh, a stormwater fee, um, in taxes, and that, that is to cover that piece of it.
So Lisa, to paraphrase that, it's a cooperative objective between the city and the HOA regarding the potential improvements of these swales.
Yes, absolutely, as, yes, absolutely, and, and again, um, when we plat these, uh, subdivisions, the, uh, maintenance requirements are actually listed right on who's responsible for, for what maintenance is on the face of the plat.
Great, thanks.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Uh, a question on the dry well, which layman's term is holding the ground for water, thank you for the clarification.
You're, you're gonna leave with something tonight.
I have observed over the years that how they are raised up. Is that part of the design, so as it does fill in over a period of time?
No, um, so the general design, when you're doing it, what, when you do a designed storm, or when you, when you size your basins, what you're looking at is the, the six inches is what is generally the used from the bottom of your grass or the top of your grass to that structure, that's your treatment. So what you're trying to do is you take all your, they call them pollution generating surfaces, your roads, sidewalks, anything that drains to the road, and you want all of that to go through the grass, and then anything more, because the grass and the soil provides a treatment, whereas the dry well's direct connection right down and through the rock into the aquifer. So we want that treatment first, and then the bigger events, the assumption is it's already been treated, so after that first flush of the road, it's a little cleaner and then it can go into the dry well.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Right, I think Mayor Pro Tim, go ahead.
One quick question about, um, this picture that you have up here, and it seems to me it's kind of a two-step issue where one, it can, the grass can become so tall that it's basically at the level portion of the dry well. But then the other parts, and perhaps the first part, is that lip that comes off the road. It, it, it seems to me that that lip that comes off the road could be something that we do just on a periodic maintenance schedule, right? Or do we already do that, Lisa?
You, I have seen on some of them, I've seen that the city does dig them out, the problem is what you'll find on most of those is those lips, a lot of times are probably half-buried, there's more than what you see, so they dig that lip out, and then they'll still end up being the whole bottom is six inches taller, so all you do is push the problem just a little bit farther into the swale, but unless you actually over X the whole depth of it, it still doesn't fix it.
Got it, okay.
Anybody else? Alright.
Alright, last one here. Oh.
Maybe not.
Oh, so that was, I'm sorry, though, go back one more. So the swale improvement, oh, and I'm sorry, they're both on there, yeah, so the swale improvement and then the stormwater structure, so the, I forgot, I put them both on, so the, we talked about the swale, the stormwater you're seeing on the dry well is essentially what the city already does, it's just documenting it, it's cleaning them. So the city already, just last year, I think, bought your vac trailer. So it's keeping up with that, but finding a way to document that and then track that through of cleaning out the dry wells, cleaning out the catch basins to keep up with it, so. That's already been done, we just wanted to make sure it was something we captured and count for in budgeting, so. Sorry, that's it.
A lot of work coming up, I'm not quite sure who was first, Council.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ball.
Oh, so wait a minute, so when you're cleaning them out, you use these back drains?
Mm-hmm.
And then where does that go then, after when the, whatever you collect in that?
So it should go into, it factor goes into the trailer, and then I'm not sure what the city does, usually they'd either go to a decant or some of them go to a special, um, like brown landfill, a special disposal, because there is potential metals and other debris that can come off from the runoff out of them.
Mm-hmm. What was the first one?
They, they, KJ. A decant facility, so that's essentially
D what?
Decant.
What is that?
So that's where they can take kind of the slurry or the water and the material, and they essentially can have a way to spread it out and let it dry out, so then they can have just the dirt to then haul off.
Okay. Yeah.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I've got a question on the construction cost, and, and I'm, assumption here, uh, under the design, it has city project management on one, twenty-nine thousand, by the way, on the other one, the city project management, ten percent, nineteen thousand, I assume that's not a fee that the city charges or collects?
For which one, can you point for, like?
Uh, the two examples would be, uh, Nylund Avenue.
Okay.
Gage Street, and the other one would be Country Vista Drive. Down under design fees.
Mm-hmm.
There's a ten percent there, and it specifically says city project management. My assumption is that has nothing to do with City of Liberty Lake, we're not charging that fee, that's not a fee for us.
It actually, I, I believe, and Lisa incorrect, that is a city fee, because the, the city has, um, your city staff has cost incurred to be able to track and manage these and to take care of these projects, so this is a way to have make sure you're pulling fees out of the appropriate cost, but.
Good.
So it, it's a cost to us, but it's not something we are getting a bill for, is that correct?
Yeah, if you will recall, if you will recall, um, when we created the project manager position.
Right.
Um, we, a significant part of the funding for that comes out of actually the capital projects, because that's what they're spending their time on. So, his time is assigned to the capital projects that he's managing.
Very good, good clarification. Uh, I would like to see it as twenty percent.
Done.
Because, you know.
Alright, are there any other, other questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Dunn.
I just want to recognize and appreciate the incremental and I'd say periodic basis. Uh, I know that the counties had to take substantive, and I'd say enormous projects on to completely remove and replace, uh, large sections of stormwater activity. So, um, our work to call it improve what we've got, rather than have to go back and completely renovate, uh, to me is a good thing. Thanks.
Alright, anybody else? Anything else for us?
No, thank you, I appreciate the time.
Thanks for all your hard work, and nice to see you again in person.
Thanks, you as well.
Alright. Okay, Lisa, do you have anything to wrap up? If not, we.
I did just want to let, uh, the council know that KJ will be coming back for your first council workshop, um, in May, your first council meeting in May for the six P M workshop. Uh, at least that's our tentative schedule to come back and present kind of the rate study and the full, and the full, uh, package, and then we can look at, uh, keep it on track to get it adopted before our June thirtieth grant deadline.
Great. Alright, thanks, everybody, so I guess we can, we will adjourn until we start back at our regular meeting at seven P M. Alright, good evening, everybody, welcome to our Tuesday, March nineteenth, city council meeting. It's seven o'clock, uh, we are going to go ahead and start with our invocation given by, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Cargill, followed by the pledge of allegiance, please join me.
Heavenly Father, thank you very much for the opportunity to come together as a community tonight to address our community's business and the concerns of the community. We ask for your blessing tonight on this meeting, that we may be able to get through the meeting, have respect for each other's points of view, and also do what is in the best interest of the city of Liberty Lake, in Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge the allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, you know, go ahead and call the meeting to order here. Um, go ahead and start with our roll call, and I don't know if, um, Councilmember Kurtz has joined us yet, so let's keep an eye out for her when she does join, so we'll go ahead and get started. Um, Councilmember Van Orman. Here. Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cargill.
Present.
Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Happy to be here.
And Councilmember Kennedy.
Present.
Alright, so, um, if we could have a motion to excuse, um, Councilmember Kurtz, she is attending a, uh, a school function, so she hopefully will be joining us here in a little bit, uh, either in person or on Zoom.
Move to excuse, uh, Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and triple seconded, give that to Council, Mayor Pro Tim, um, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, Councilmember Kurtz's excuse, if, when she, if and when she does join us, we will note the time of her arrival. Alright, moving right on, we are up to agenda approval, Mayor Pro Tim.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed and posted.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Councilmember Ball. Um, all in favor of approving the agenda as, as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? A motion passes six zero, thank you. Alright, we are already up to citizen comments, so just a reminder, uh, if you're here in chambers, we have some yellow half-sheets over by the door, please fill one of those out and get it to Kyle Dixon at the end of the table over here. Um, citizen comments are limited to three minutes on, on any topic, we just ask you to be uh, respectful of, of everybody in the room, um, and I, we, I will stop anybody, uh, at, at three minutes, that's just the fair thing to do. Uh, and if you are online, please send a note, uh, to our meeting host, and he will let me know. Again, uh, three minutes is the limit, and, um, looks like we already have one, you don't need to give that to me. We already have one in council chambers, Brad Hamlet, please, join us. Oh, and just a reminder before you do start, so, um, if anybody's new, um, this strictly is, uh, co- um, citizen comment period, there won't be any back and forth with council, but if there's something we need to follow up with the staff, we'll make sure we take in touch with you.
Uh, good evening, mayor and council members, uh, this is a very quick, um, comment. Um, I would like to, I noticed, uh, as I've gone through the last few, um, agenda and consent items, there's been a lot of, um, um, purchases for, uh, equipment for maintenance of our facilities, so I think are great, but I'd like to encourage the, uh, city to, in the future, consider, um, electrification of our fleet. Um, I think it's really important, um, considering the direction of our climate, and I think our little warm streak here is a pretty good indication of things being a little bit out of whack in terms of our, our, uh, climate and the way things are going, I think anytime any, any city, anywhere, I hope would take a, a leadership role in trying to electrify their fleet, and that was my only comment today. And I hope in the future that the city will certainly give some consideration to doing that, thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Hey, is there anybody else here in chambers who'd like to make a citizen comment? It doesn't look like it, do we have anybody online? Oh, we do? Sure, um, and when, when you're finished, if you can fill out the yellow sheet so we know, have your contact information? Just give it, do it after, just introduce yourself and let us know if you're Liberty Lake resident or not.
Okay, thank you, my name's Aaron McMurray, I'm not a resident of Liberty Lake, but I'm here on behalf of Marla Larson and some other residents. Um, good evening, and, uh, I bring greetings on behalf of Inovia Foundation's CEO Shelley O'Quinn, a former county commissioner, and have been working with Tom Solberg and Marla Larson and a group of other very involved citizens, uh, around the idea of a charitable fund that would benefit long-term the community of Liberty Lake. Would it please the council if I shared some information that could be a lead behind, and then that will speed up my ability to share a brief comment for everyone, and I'll leave copies, um, for the other citizens in the room if I may, thank you very much. Very briefly, Inovia Foundation is our region's community foundation, and what that means is that we are a five oh one C three public charity, and our mission and work is to partner with local residents, donors, nonprofit organizations, municipalities, and other organizations to build charitable funds around the idea that when people have the opportunity to be generous to a fund, uh, with a trusted organization, they're more likely to make gifts that will create long-term benefit for the charitable causes that they're passionate about, and increasingly as a community foundation, we're seeing more and more folks build these kinds of funds in a grassroots way to fund those unmet needs that people care about in their communities. A very brief example of this is a gentleman that many of us may know named Larry Stanley, a longtime business leader in our county who built a fund for his hometown of Oakdale, Washington. Seated an endowment, challenged other members of the town of Oakdale to join him in building this fund, and he set it up in such a way that people who cared about Oakdale and the community and the future of Oakdale could make a gift, receive a charitable gift deduction, and that all of the decision-making about the grants out of that fund would be made by local members of the community. Um, when Marla and Tom and others heard about this idea, they became very intrigued about some of the exciting opportunities right here in Liberty Lake, and they came up with the dream and the idea of a fund called, um, the Liberty Lake Better Together Fund, and the idea of challenging and inspiring people who care about Liberty Lake to come together, make charitable gifts that would receive a full charitable gift deduction, pool those funds, in some cases perhaps invest and grow them, and they have the decision-making made by local residents to fund local causes, um, that people care about. So my only goal today was just to introduce. Local causes, um, that people care about. So my only goal today was just to introduce. This concept and let everyone know that, um, Inovia Foundation, as our region's community foundation. Can serve as a partner for grassroots efforts just such as these, um, to support community folks who care deeply about their community. Not just in the now, uh, but long into the future. The current vision statement for this fund idea. That Marla and Tom and others have come up with, um, the Liberty Lake Better Together Fund reads as. To foster vibrant community spirit by financially empowering events and gatherings that celebrate. Unite and enrich our city's diverse population.
And I'm gonna have to stop you there. Well, thank you so much for coming. I've been involved in these conversations as well, as you know. Um, and for the council, if there's any questions about the Liberty Lake Together logo, it is not copyrighted. Former Mayor Brinkner paid for that. And we have the permission, uh, the, the group has the permission from the artist to use it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Did everybody get a, okay, great. All right, um, anybody else here in chambers? All right, not seeing any. Do we have anybody online who'd like to comment? Okay, just a reminder that we do have another public comment session at the end and, um, at each resolution and ordinance that's before us tonight. Okay, we're going to go ahead then with announcements, proclamations and special presentations. Tonight we have a proclamation for Women's History Month.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, council, tonight before us, we have a proclamation, uh, the City of Liberty Lake, Washington for Women's History Month. Whereas American women of every race, class and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and. Unrecorded ways. And whereas in nineteen ten, Washington became the fifth state to enact women's suffrage. And our state's role helped spark the campaign that resulted in the nineteenth amendment to the U S Constitution in nineteen twenty. And. Whereas in nineteen eighty, President Jimmy Carter issued the first presidential proclamation declaring the week of March eighth as National Women's Week. In nineteen eighty-seven, Congress passed Public Law one hundred dash nine designating March as Women's History Month. And whereas women of every race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, age, ability, religion and socioeconomic background. Continue to make significant and historic contributions to the development and strength of our city, state, nation and world. And. Whereas the twenty twenty-four theme of Women's History Month is women who advocate for diversity, equity and inclusion. And whereas women from diverse backgrounds have fought for equal treatment for all, recognizing that together. Women have and will continue to make strides to resist discrimination and achieve, and achieve equitable treatment and compensation. Through collaborative efforts and solidarity.
All right. So at this time, I would ask for a motion in a second to support this proclamation before we finish it up.
Madam Mayor, I move that the council supports proclamation.
Thank you. We have a second. Can you mean my mo, uh, Councilmember Van Orman? All right. Therefore be it proclaimed that the month of March twenty twenty-four be designated as Women's History Month. And all residents of and visitors to Liberty Lake are encouraged to join in recognizing and celebrating the tremendous contributions. That women of the past, present and future make to city, state, national and world history. Dated this nineteenth day of March twenty twenty-four. Thanks, everybody. I'll get this signed. Appreciate your support and, uh, we'll have a little bit of a continuation of Women's History Month, um, during my mayor's report. Oh, no, we didn't. So all in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. I was so excited. All right, um, so next up we have reports and inquiries. We are up to do council reports. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Dunn.
Um, uh, last week on Wednesday, I had a chance to visit with the city Spokane, uh, Mayor Lisa Brown and her cabinet about the upcoming Expo seventy-four anniversary celebrations. Uh, the mission was to talk a little bit about, um, S T A and its ability to contribute to the objectives. Uh, I just want to put the word out that we're, I mean, the whole community should be excited about, uh, celebration which starts May third and runs through about July fourth. Um, good things are coming to town. Um, also just want to, uh, recognize this past Saturday, uh, U S L men's soccer game Spokane Velocity. Uh, this is a new sport for our community. I'm just going to put the word out. This is a great thing. Uh, it was a sold out game and it was a great event at the new Spokane One. Uh, arena. So it's a, you know, a new property up there. Um, but yeah, just get out there and celebrate, um, sports in our community.
Thank you. Any other council reports? Um, Councilmember Van Orman first, then Councilmember Ball.
Sure. Met with the, uh, Spokane Valley, Valley Fest Parade Committee. They're getting things together again. September twentieth is when that happens for all of Liberty Lake. Spokane Valley and the surrounding areas. Also, of course, inside that Valley Fest Parade before it starts, Liberty Lake Lions Club will be having their bed races. So. Get your sneakers on and.
Is it going to be happening at the parade this year?
It's going to be happening before the.
Oh, nice. That was fun. I remember.
So it's going to be great. And one more thing about Lions Club, I want to make sure everyone knew. That if you've got extra glasses, extra hearing aids, we'll have a collection right here at City Hall. As well as Yokes and a few other places around Liberty Lake. Uh, we refurbished them and hand them back out to those that need them. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Ball.
Oh, um, I went to the Spokane Valley Fire Department's Administration Building for that, um, uh, focus group today. And it was, that wasn't long, but it was really interesting. And, um, the guy that was doing the presentation had us do a. Like a survey, you know, what, what's most important, you know, worst to least. And it was hard to figure, I mean, they're all so very important. Um, but yeah, I think they will have results. When did they say? Cause I know Jed and Dan were there, but that they'll have that all calculated.
You know, on it over the next few days.
Yeah, so then we'll kind of have an idea of what everybody thought, but it was pretty interesting. So.
All right, anybody else? Councilmember Kennedy.
Uh, thank you. Over the last six weeks or so, I've been out of town off and on, working down in Southern California. It was some business, uh, we've been involved with for years. And I had a unique experience come about that I find interesting. It really has an impact on City of Liberty Lake and how we've grown and where we go from here. A- anywhere between Indio, California and Palm Springs is about a twenty mile stretch. And in that period. Area, there's nine cities that are there. And it used to be that you could go from one to the other and know where their distinction is. Now that it's so developed, you really don't see that. The only distinction is the telephone poles are colored differently. The thing I found interesting is I had the opportunity to meet with some of the council members that from Indio City where they have been around for fifty plus years. Approximately fifty thousand people that are in that community, all the way to twenty miles away where Palm Springs has been around for a long period of time. And there's small cities in between that's gone through a growth pattern. The thing that's most interesting is that in such a short period of time. There are cities that have been around for a long period of time and their growth has gone like this and then it stabilized and then it started going this direction. And now they're going through the struggle of trying to get business to move in, uh, real estate development, things of that sort there. Then a little as six, seven miles away, there's other cities that are on a huge growth. So businesses are moving in. Uh, homes are being built, things of the sort here. So in a microcosm there, it's interesting that we're, of seeing. Council members that are struggling with keeping up with inflation, the cost of doing business for their city and their citizens. To our other businesses that are so flush financially that they're not taking into consideration what the cities seven miles away have been suffering. And I hope that we, the city, keep that in mind as at the prosper times that we're going through. That things that we obligate our citizens for in the future is not a handicap. So we're very fortunate with the growth we have, the businesses, everything like that. But I found it very educational for me to be able to be involved in that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other council reports? All right, not hearing any. And I'm going to apologize now. My mayor's report is going to be a little lengthy because I've got my report from the National League of Cities. But first I'm going to start it off and we're going to queue up, queue up a video, but not start it quite yet. Um, with us tonight is Sindhu Pranini. Who is one, one of our outstanding young ladies here, here in Liberty Lake. And I, I apologize, I, I end up having to go out of town. Uh, last minute for work and, and missed the celebration, but Sindhu was, uh, one of the, um, Y W C A of Spokane's. Twenty twenty-four Women of Achievement Award honorees last week. So she was, she got the Young Woman of Achievement Award. Um, there's a whole bio. I'm not going to read the, read the whole thing. Uh, most of you should be familiar with Sindhu. She has done the painting out here in, in the hallway. She's done a lot of great things for our community, been, um, teaching classes. I, I, I'm not even, I won't do it justice, uh, by, by telling you everything she's done. That's why I've got the video. Uh, but she's a great, great part of our community already at such a young age. I'm looking forward to more and more great things from her. And I had the honor of interviewing her, um, for, uh, for presentation at, at the ceremony. And so we've got a little bit of a clip of my interview, um, and, uh, and then we'll, I'll go ahead and I'll. Bring Sindhu up just to say hello to everybody and answer any questions. Go ahead. And this award is a woman of achievement.
I'm very honored and humbled to be able to be the recipient of this award. And I'm very grateful for everyone along the way, like you who've helped me come to this point in my life. And. I didn't start off with a goal to get all these awards. My original. Thought was just to help others and do what I can to make a difference. And that started in twenty twenty in quarantine. When I had a lot of free time at my hands. And that's when I started doing art. I realized I got good at it. So I started teaching others how to do that online. I taught over four hundred art classes that were free to these students. And then from there, my journey took me different places and I was able to do many things in my life. And I'm very grateful. To be the recipient of this award.
Obviously, one of your other really big accomplishments is, um, having your own Ted Talk. So tell me a little bit about that experience.
Yeah, so I gave my first Ted Talk in Spokane in October of twenty twenty-two. And that was one of the best experiences of my life and that have shaped me to become who I am today. It was a really different experience from anything I've done. It was one of my first big talks on stage with that type of audience. And it was really good, um, experience for me. And I'm really grateful to be able to share about my journey. And that specific Ted Talk was about my journey. How I was able to accomplish things at a young age and how age isn't a limiting factor to make a difference in people's lives and do anything. And that it's possible to do anything that you want if you set your mind to it.
And obviously, um, most of what you do, uh, is, um, philanthropical. Um, I know you, you've made donations to Blessing Under the Bridge with some of your art and I know you've got a foundation. Um, tell us a little bit more about that.
Yeah, so a lot of my art that I make money. From a lot of my art represents diversity and inclusion and they're usually big canvas paintings. And I sell them and the money I make from that, I donate to organizations that support the homeless and low income families or just people in need. Especially is the target I have for the organizations I support. And. In the past couple of years, I especially helped two main organizations, Blessings Under the Bridge and Giving Backpacks or Giving Back Spokane. And this year I've been helping a lot more different organizations that do different things for the community, but still helping others. And I started donating money that I made. From the paintings that I sold and the art classes that I taught. I started doing just some six week summer camps. Worth just a ten dollar registration fee and that's how I made more money. And this year I've been making my money more throughout. Doing Henna and different events in the community and also doing math tutoring. And different things like that where I've been able to make money and donate to those organizations.
Well, and obviously, you know, by doing a lot of these other things that you're, that's including other people like the kids. I know I've, I've seen your Henna art and it's beautiful. Uh, I know you've partnered with a couple of the local businesses for some events. Um, and you know, I'm, I'm, uh, myself, I'd be, probably be interested in some point in getting that. But it's really great to see you engaged with the other kids around from, of all ages and the adults as well, so that they're aware of, um. What you are, what you are striving for when you, when you're helping with these different organizations. Uh, talk to us a little bit about your, um, your global, your artwork that has the globe in it with the hands. I know it's, it's in, there's an installation in New York. So why don't you tell us about that a little bit?
Yeah, so that artwork is called Everyone is Loved Here. And the reason I created that is because in schools. I haven't always felt like I belonged and that I was loved in schools. So I wanted to make sure that others didn't feel that way, the best that I could make a difference. So I started creating this art piece called Everyone is Loved Here and the target for it was schools. So it's in schools all across America. And, um. It has a heart with the shape, it has a earth with the shape of a heart in it. And inside that heart, there is a face and it's a silhouette. But inside that face, there's a bunch of different silhouette faces, but they all have different skin colors on them. And it's all in the shape of a heart to represent that everyone is loved here in this world, regardless of any differences. And that's the reason why I created this art. And I'm just glad to be able to make an impact in many different ways.
Well, I tell you, I don't know how you keep up with everything you do, including your schoolwork, which I know is fabulous as well. Um, what would you say to other kids who are, who are maybe going through the same thing as you did growing up and how to, how to handle maybe some of that? Not feeling like they belong.
I'd say definitely to try your best to not let negative things in your life affect you and instead. Push back up from them and move on and try to look at them as experiences to grow and become a better person. And it can be hard. It's not easy, but you just have to do your best to not let it affect you. And just keep pushing forward because eventually things will get better if you keep trying and keep pushing forward. And if I haven't gone through those negative obstacles in my life, especially in schools, the way I've been treated differently. I don't think I'd be the person I am today because yes, they weren't positive experiences, but I was able to get positive outcomes from those experiences.
Well, it takes a special person to be able to recognize that and to turn negatives into positives. I know. Not everybody is able to do that and it's, it's been amazing to see the things that you've done. Uh, and I know some things coming up. You, you do, you've got your Bollywood classes. Um, and a whole bunch of other things coming up. Is there anything in particular you want to point out that's coming up in the future?
Um, right now, one of the main things I'm doing is teaching free Bollywood dance throughout the community. So I teach it to anyone who's interested and we practice once a week. And I choreograph the dances and teach them to these people who want to learn from me. And we perform at many different events. We just performed at an event last week. And we'll be performing at an event at the Fox Theater in February. So I'm super excited. To be able to also give these opportunities and experiences to other people.
Well, I remember now that I think back, I think the first time I actually met you and the rest of your family was at, um, Pavilion Park in Liberty Lake. When you were having the, the, um, Community Talent Show. And I know your, your brother won an award. All right, so, so I was going to stop a little bit early, but it's, Sindhu's just such a fantastic lady. And, um, you know, given that this is Women's History Month, I, I see Sindhu as one of our future women. Um, that we will be honoring for, for years to come. And I'd just like to kind of come up and shake your hand again. Um, congratulate you for your award.
And I'm going to go ahead and put in one more. She went ahead and single-handedly. Went ahead and raised enough funds to help out Sleep in Heavenly Peace. Was probably, I'd say, close to a hundred beds and the bedding. So, thank you.
Fantastic. All right. Well, and you, when you turn eighteen, you can run for city council. All right. So moving on, uh, one more fun little thing. We're going to embarrass Councilmember Dunn real quick. Um, so first, happy birthday. Hope you didn't think I would, we were ignoring that early. Um, but also, um, we'd like to honor the fact that you are now, as of this meeting, the longest city. Count sitting city council member in, in the city's history. So with this month, with this, this meeting tonight. So congratulations. Okay, and I will run through my N L C report as fast as I can, but there were some really good nuggets from this. If anybody wants any additional information, I've got all the PowerPoints. Um, I'll skip some of the classes I went to, um, to focus on the ones that made the biggest impact. Cybersecurity, I think I. I, I went to the similar class last year, um, but it's always very impactful and just goes to show how important it is that we have a great relationship with. With our I T partner Executech. Um, so just some, some statistics here. So twenty twenty-three was the worst year on record for cyber attacks. Last year I probably said twenty twenty-two was the worst. So, uh, we see a trend there. So fifty-eight percent of local governments were targeted by ransomware attacks last year. Eighty percent succeeded. Seventy percent of those that succeeded were from phishing attempts. So when, when we send out the, the, um, the test emails to test the city employees and to test our commission members. And to test our city council members, it's just a reminder to be very careful about what you open. Uh, and I know people are still getting, I still get reports at least once a month of council members and commission members and city employees getting. Emails from me that aren't from me. Uh, most everybody's wise to it by now, but these are ways that, that people get in. And we need to make sure we're very diligent, um, not opening attachments, not opening. And we need to make sure we're very diligent, not opening attachments, not opening videos, pictures, those kinds of things unless you know it's from a trusted source. Our SOFOs program through Executech does a pretty good job of of catching a lot of those things, but it can't catch everything. The average demand in 2023 was $2.07 million. But a couple of huge notes, Dallas was hit for 8.6 million, Oakland 10 million, San Bernardino County 1.1 million. And then if you do watch the news over the last month, month to eight weeks, the 2024 healthcare provider attack that that hit the whole nation. $22 million that was actually paid on March 4. So it's scary stuff. And so as part of that presentation, there was a company called 418 Intelligence. They do microprinterships. So it's something that I want Mark and I and Kyle to follow up with Executech on to see where they are. Because the scariest, scarier statistic is is that the cyber, US cybersecurity industry is short 570,000 people. That's very sobering. So we'll continue to do everything we can to keep the cities safe. I attended the Retail as a Catalyst for Economic Development Forum. Again, this was this was a repeat from last year, but every year there's something new. And I asked the question this year, if there was any any suggestions for cities like ours who are on the border of a state that has, you know, just lower barrier to entry. No B and O tax, no, you know, a lower sales tax, a lower minimum wage, all those things. You know, when I first moved here, we had just lost, you know, Cabela's had decided to go go to Idaho. So the gal who was presenting pointed me to the Border Region Retail Tourism Development Act that was put in place in Tennessee in 2011. I still have some digging to do on this. I had an initial conversation with the CEO of AWC about this. And she she thought that maybe there was something similar on the west side. But really what it does in Tennessee, it allows municipalities that border other states and have an interstate highway running through them to apply for this designation through the state commissioner of revenue. It's set up to go 12 miles into Tennessee from the border and and the area is a half mile on either side of the interstate. And what it does in effect is it provides a rebate to the sales tax difference between, say, Idaho and and Washington. As and that gets back to the business somehow as a rebate toward their development. Again, I I don't have the nitty gritty details on how it works, but we're gonna, we're gonna start, keep looking. I'm gonna have some more conversations with AWC. And if this is something that we can get traction on, it's possibly something that we could work with our state representatives on, get the mayors of all of the border cities involved. We don't, you know, we don't have to even, you know, include Tennessee just happens to designate it along an interstate. But there are tons of smaller towns, especially, you know, we've got, think about Newport, think about Pullman, that are probably very much affected by businesses choosing Idaho or Washington that this could affect. So that was that was a huge, huge win right there of information. Let me see, I'm just trying to pick some other ones out of here. Oh, okay, and so interesting that the Bradley. Okay, so one of the sessions I went to was financing local clean energy projects through direct pay. And this is something fairly new. I think they just finally got the final details worked out on it in the last couple of weeks. And and I'll be talking more with Mark and Kyle on this. But this, these are direct tax credits for projects that get paid directly back to the jurisdiction. So you don't have to wait till the end of the year. You apply ahead of time. This is what the project entails. When it's, when the project is finished, unfortunately, it's not something you get upfront. You get it when the project is complete and in service. But it are, they are direct tax credits back to the cities. And for example, the the rebate for the electric vehicles. That's why I was disappointed that Brad stepped out for a second. I think it's $7, $7,500 tax rebate. And I know, you know, we've talked about it a little bit here at City Council. But, you know, I think it's it's time that we start taking a look at it a little bit more seriously. And there's also rebates on electric vehicle charging station, though. I know we've got some opportunities with the Vista for those. So whether it's putting, starting to work on putting our solar panels on Trailhead or other projects. This is a great program to to really reduce the cost of some of those projects. So I am going to cut that report short because, as I said, there's there's so much more I could share. And so I think with that, I will turn it over to Mark for the city administrator report.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of council, and our guests in the audience tonight. I'm gonna start out with our events and reminders. And just to point out, the Community Engagement Commission meeting is tomorrow evening here in City Hall. And the reason I point this out is because at our last workshop on March the 5th, there were a couple of items that were assigned to the Community Engagement Commission that had some deadlines associated with them. And so tomorrow is going to be the first opportunity that we have to talk with the commission about planning to carry those things out. And so if anybody is interested in in attending the meeting, whether it's here in City Hall or virtually, we'd love to have you to hear what the commission is gonna do to kind of address those things. In addition to that, we're also gonna talk about the future of the Community Satisfaction Survey. We've reached this point where we're getting a trickle of responses. And so the question is going to be, do we want to invest anymore to get additional responses or not? And so both of those things will be on the agenda, including some other things. And so if you're interested in community engagement and how that looks in Liberty Lake, come on down. Trailhead Driving Range opening, as many of you have seen, as you came into City Hall or as you were driving around town in the last couple of weeks. The the poles have been set, the crews have been hanging the netting, they're just about done. They'll have some finishing work outside of hanging the netting. But regardless of that, we're expecting for that work to be completed and for the driving range to be open by the end of the month. And if something changes with that timing, we will let everyone know via social media and website. But we don't expect for that to occur. And so look forward for the driving range to be open sometime between now and the end of the month. Central Valley School District Spring Break is April the 1st through the 5th. And I'll take the opportunity to say that I believe today is the official first day of spring. So we made it. And the kids will be out of school next week. And as a reminder, regarding the April City Council meetings, council has elected to move those to April 9th and 23rd off of the regular schedule of the 2nd and the 16th. So if you make it a practice to attend city council meetings as a guest or an observer, keep in mind that those meetings in April will be on the 9th and the 23rd. The Granicus to East Civic Clerk Transition, we talked about last time, we're in the midst of that. We created the agenda for this meeting in both systems to put civic clerk through kind of a live fire exercise. And so on the April 9th meeting, we will be off of Granicus and onto civic clerk. And then going forward, we'll be using civic clerk for agenda preparation and and meeting management.
Hey, Mark, real quick before you go on, if we can note that Councilmember Kurtz has joined us online. She has sent me a note. I can't, I don't, can't see the participants. Go ahead.
And then last item on reminders, City Academy Class Number Three will be kicking off on April 18th. And so the invitation to register for that is on our website. And if you would like to learn more about the city and how the city conducts business, please join us for that eight week class starting on April 18th. Any questions about those events? Yes, sir.
I do, yes. Mark, what time is the Community Engagement Meeting tomorrow night?
They start at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, thank you.
Mark, you said the schools are closed next week?
It's April 1st through the 5th.
Okay, that's the following week.
Sorry, the following week.
I thought, do they have two weeks off?
No, that was my mistake. It's it's the 1st through the 5th.
Okay, thanks.
All right, it's our second meeting of the month. And so we have department reports that have been included in the packet. And now is council's opportunity to ask department directors anything they may like about those reports.
Councilmember Spencer, go ahead.
Yeah, this one's for for Kyle. With the TBD sales tax going into effect, are the businesses receiving any sort of notification from us or does that come down from the state?
Comes down from the Department of Revenue, sends a campaign of of information out, so.
Just a real quick question about the library one for Jandy. You had mentioned at the library board meeting last week that there was a, you have to fill in the blanks for me here, that there was an issue with the way one of our systems was counting the tabulations of number of people, I think, coming in. Is that right? So the the report that we got for February, is that with that corrected or is that without that corrected? Okay. 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 Got it, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Kennedy.
Oh, thank you, there. I have a question for Jen. Very simple question, Jen, when is the hardest working employees that we have coming back to work?
Within the next month.
Very good. And where were they positioned? Any particular place to start with?
Most likely, they'll start at Rocky Hill Park.
Very good, thank you.
For those questioning, there's are the goats.
All right, now we'd like to take the opportunity, we have a trio of new staff members that we'd like to welcome and introduce to council. And so we'll start with Jacob Norance. Jacob, Jacob is a familiar face, but he's recently moved from our Maintenance and Operations Department to our Finance Department. And so he is a payroll technician and is doing great in his first couple of weeks. And so Jake, why don't you introduce yourself?
My name is Jacob Norretts. I used to work in the Streets Department, been here for four years now and just made the transition, like Mark was saying, over to finance. So it's, it's been awesome so far. It's given me a greater appreciation for the stuff that goes on behind the scenes. So I really appreciate it.
Could not be more excited to have him on board. You may have seen him back behind me for a couple of meetings too. So he is ready to dive in, he's a jack of all trades, and he's gonna be stellar in his new role.
Well, I would say since day one, when when I interviewed Jacob and and throughout the, I can't believe it's been that long already. He's shown great ambition toward moving up through the ranks here. And, you know, and it's just, and I've said this before, as we have promoted people from within, it is just, it's an amazing accomplishment for us as a city to be able to do that and and be able to help our our employees grow into different positions and and learn more and and be, continue to be part of the city. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I can say back, I'm welcome. I'm really thrilled to have you here in that position. You know, we've been in a position for a long, pretty time. We've got RJ, who's done an outstanding job for us, Kyle has done an outstanding job. But I think it's been so critical that we started having some backup there for as as we grow. So great to have you onboard.
It's it's awesome to be a part of this.
Somebody to keep an eye on Kyle.
So so just as a reminder, so Erica Mendez, who is now our treasurer, was our payroll technician. So she got promoted and now we've been able to backfill her, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jake. Next up, and I'm gonna ask Lisa to to do this introduction and then Jen following Lisa. We have a new associate planner in the Planning and Engineering Department. And so I'll ask Lisa to introduce Lance.
Yeah, Lance, would you like to come on up? I'm just thrilled to have Lance Mueller joining us in the Planning Department. He has hit the ground running. He is professional with a variety of background, everything from the permitting side of the house to transportation planning. I'm so glad to have somebody else who knows transportation planning. And so welcome, Lance. Would you like to share a little bit about yourself?
Hi, yeah, so I'm Lance Mueller, I'm the new associate planner and been here now about three weeks. And it's been really, really nice. Everybody's been very nice to me. A little bit about my experience is I worked for a little over eight years for the Coeur d'Alene Tribe in their Public Works Department as a planner, doing a lot of long range planning, like transportation planning, grant management. I also spent a few years working for the city of Spokane Building Department as a permit technician, issuing permits. And most recently, I was in central Wisconsin for the last year and a half, working for the Wassa Metropolitan Planning Organization, transportation planning. And it's nice to be back here in eastern Washington.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lance.
Is the, is that mic working?
It sounded like it was.
Oh, it sounded to me like it wasn't. Testing, okay, sorry, must just be me.
And then, as everybody remembered, we had a heavy emphasis on recreation and our strategic plan survey and planning process. And so one of the things that we have done to help accentuate that is to bring in a new rec coordinator. And so I'm gonna ask Jen to introduce Mikel.
Well, this has been a long time coming to get this kind of help and support from someone who really knows what they're doing. And he insisted that he wanted to be here in person tonight, and I cringed a little bit. But this is the the opposite personalities going on here. Rec Coordinator, Mikel Stevens, take it away.
Hi, I'm Mikel Stevens. I spent about eight years with City Rathrum managing the Recreation Department. And then most recently, I was the general manager of Spokane Gymnastics.
So you need to toot your own horn a little bit more. You you pretty much developed the entire rec program in Rathrum, right?
Yeah, when I started, it was just me. And then when I left, I had two full time employees underneath me. And we added multiple community events, youth programs, adult programs, classes. We had a community event, we did a community wide trunk retreat where we averaged about 10,000 people that came through the last couple of years that I was there.
Welcome, we're happy to have you. And I know Jen is too.
Thank you, I'm happy to be here.
Thanks, Mikel.
Thanks, thanks for you guys coming in after hours to to join us and meet the council.
And so as a, I guess, as a closing remark on this item, as we continue to fill out staffing, hopefully, within the near future, we will be able to bring a couple of new additions in some positions that we've talked about recently to introduce to the council. Moving on now to number four, Johnson and Johnson opioid settlement. If council remembers, over the last couple of years, the city has signed on to a couple of other opioid settlement agreements. And so this one's the latest that's that's coming along. And so the window for signing on to this particular agreement is through May 11th. And so I'm bringing this to you tonight, just to give you a heads up that we're planning to bring that agreement before council on the 9th of April. And this is like all of the others, it's contingent upon all of the eligible cities signing on. And that means our cities and counties. And so that means 125 organizations. Now, the previous two agreements had full participation. So we are currently receiving revenue according to the One Washington MOU for both of those agreements. The difference between the Johnson and Johnson settlement and the others is the Johnson and Johnson settlement will be paid in one year. And so if we sign on to that agreement as a participant, and everyone else does too, we will receive one payment likely in June or July of this month for the share that is outlined in the One Washington MOU. And so what that would look like in terms of cash would be about 24,000 minus attorney's fees. And so we would get that one time infusion of cash for Johnson and Johnson. The others, as you recall, were paid out over different lengths of time. And so those would continue to come in over those, over those agreed upon schedules. But again, we'll be bringing this back and council can have an opportunity to discuss the terms and conditions at the April 9th meeting. Any questions on that one? Yes, ma'am.
Well, I kind of sworn I saw something or read something that it was like 900,000 that we could potentially receive on this settlement.
So we, so according to the One Washington MOU, the Liberty Lake city proportion is .038965, some percentage, right? And so when you apply that to the amount that will be coming to cities, it's a, it's about 24 grand, a little, little more than 24 grand. And then you subtract 15% off of that. So it's just north of 20 that we would get for opioid abatement activities. Okay.
Keep in mind too, the number he just told you is a percent. So there's another couple of zeros will be in front of it. So that's why the numbers are relatively.
Exactly, so it'd be .00039 when you get to the calculator.
Lot of work for not much, but you know, that money, you know, at least with, can help our police department with their supplies and 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 other first responders. So it's not like we can't put it to good use.
Yes. And then finally, I'll invite Jandy up to the podium. We have some exciting news about the 2024 Washington Library Association Awards that she's gonna share with you.
Good evening, everyone. I am so excited to be here today. We just had the Washington State Library Association Conference. It was here in Spokane this year. And Erin and Michaela, who's not here, they were both honored as the Kaya, it's K.A.S.T., Kyle. I always mess it up. Anyways, the children's and youth. Kyle, I always mess it up. Anyways, the Children's and Youth, um, Visionary Services Award. So they were honored as the children and teen librarians for the whole entire state of Washington. So of course, we here in Liberty Lake have known for a long time how awesome of a job Erin and Michaela have been doing. But it's great for them to receive, um, some state recognition for it.
Yes.
So, um, Erin has worked with, with us for four years. She started out, um, just assisting me with children's programs. And then after I became the director, she moved up and has been doing all of our children's programming for the last two years now. Yeah, two years now. Um, everyone loves Ms. Erin so much. Um, if you were here, um, in the library at 10:30 in the morning, you would see what a celebrity she is in Liberty Lake. People stop her at the grocery store. Look, it's Ms. Erin, Ms. Erin. So we love, we love having Erin so much. Um, and Michaela, who's not here tonight, I know you guys got to know her a little bit better this last year. She was filling in for me while I was on maternity leave, but she has done a lot of hard work with our teen programming. As you know, teens are very particular about what they like and what they don't like. And so she has been working really hard with them. Um, we just had a poetry slam at Boko Pop that was very well attended for teens. And as you know, I told you in the past, she's done a lot of work with our teen volunteer hours. Um, and so we are so happy to have her and we were just so proud of them for receiving this award. And so we wanted to make sure you guys all knew so you could sing their praises too.
Fabulous. Congratulations.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Thanks, Erin. Congratulations.
Mark, before we go, uh, did we have a quick update on where we are with Trailhead Restaurant? We have a, our number of applicants or anything like that?
Um, I would
Working on that.
I don't have the most recent information in front of me and Lisa has left the chamber. And so, um, we can ask her to provide us with an update.
Yeah. Cause I know when we started, we had, we did have a, a restaurant group already sniffing around and I believe they're still sniffing. Um, and when, um, I had touched base with you last week, I know we've been having a lot of questions come in, clarifications. Um, so there are, um, entities going through the process, um, to make sure they can, there she, what you to clarify, I know, to, to clarify, um, things for their RFP. So at least do you have anything else to add without disclosing too much?
Yeah. So, so we have, um, they've been showing, uh, the facility actually pretty regularly. They've had at least four or five, um, expressions of interest right now. So, um, they have, yeah, so there's, uh, uh, right now people are, you know, asking questions and doing their due diligence. I don't think we've had a formal proposal yet. But, um, they are working, they're working their magic and, uh, really, um, bringing in some folks. So I think we should have some good choices when they, when, when they finally get their proposals in.
Yeah. Well, and, and I, and I, I had clarified this with Mark as well. You know, the last time we had, we had the three, two were, um, specific, um, cuisine. Uh, and I believe we're pretty clear that's not what we are after this time. So hopefully we should have, we will have weeded some of those out.
What I'm hearing is that we actually have some really, a, a really great range of potential interested parties.
Right. But we're excited. Go ahead. Councilmember Kennedy.
Uh, thank you, Mary. I would like to, um, like to caution the, the council to be very cautious on who contacts you and asks for information. I've had a couple of individuals who have restaurants have contacted me because of long association to say, oh, what can you tell me about it? And I simply say to them is that I refer them to Lisa, uh, to contact Lisa because I mind them that I'm going to be voting on this. And it really wouldn't be appropriate. It would look inappropriate. They suddenly, uh, say, well, you know, Mr. Kennedy is giving me this advice or that advice. I strongly recommend referring to Lisa and
And I'm just referring them directly to the Realtor.
As, as I mentioned in the voicemail left to you, is that, uh, whoever, yourself or the Realtor is fine, but not me.
Yep. Good point. Thank you. Thanks for the update, Lisa. Appreciate it. Sorry for the diversion, Mark.
No worries. That concludes my report.
All right. So we are back to library for the library board of trustees report.
All right. So, um, I'm Kim Gerard. I sit on the library board of trustees and I'm going to work with Jenny to give you our quarterly report. The next page. Hope so in 2023, oh, put my little geezer glasses on. Um, the library had 62,628 visitors, 107,902 checkouts. 6,505 library cardholders, um, 382 reservations for our meeting rooms. And, uh, the collection included 25,715, um, physical materials. On the next slide, you can see a comparison between 2022 and 2023. And you can see that our physical materials collection include, um, improved 4.6%. We had 20% more visitors in 2023 than we did in 2022. We had an 84% growth in our meeting room usage, but that's because you just got the second meeting room or that meeting room.
It was because in the year before, we only had the meeting room open for like three or four months.
Right. So it was open the whole year. So we had a big jump in that. We had 10% greater checkouts in 2023 than 2022 and a 4.3% jump in the number of our library cardholders. So just like the rest of Liberty Lake is thriving, our library is thriving as well.
So Jandy has transitioned, uh, got a text from somebody who's online asking if you can speak more closely into the mic.
Yes, we will yell into the mic. Um, yes. Next slide, Michael. So this is what, um, um, councilmember Cargo was referring to earlier. So, um, in 2024, we've had an increase in usage than, than we've seen in years past. Part of me is calling this the post-falls phenomenon because as you may have heard, they had catastrophic water damage to their library. Um, they're going to be closed for many months. Liberty Lake is, for many of those patrons, is the closest library for them now. Um, others might be going to Hayden or Coeur d'Alene, but we've seen a dramatic increase in usage. Um, we did have a faulty sensor over a weekend that was saying that we had had 15,000, 15,000 visitors. This was incorrect. It thought 6,000 people had come through the library on a Sunday and we aren't even open on Sunday. So we did some averages and got that number correct. So, um, our January visitors for the, um, for that month was 5,000, 5,100 visitors. So we were up that month, um, 330, nope, 472 visitors, um, in comparison to last January a year ago. So, mm, pretty good. Um, but February is where we've seen a even more dramatic increase. Um, in February, we had 5,530 visitors. This is up over 1,100 for February. February is usually our lowest month. Part of that is, you know, that there's a couple less days in the month, but also, you know, February sad and rainy and snowy. Um, so we don't see as many visitors. Um, but with this post-falls phenomenon, we have had a lot more books coming through our shipment for holds. And our storytimes have been insane. Um, if you come by the library at 10:30, you will not find a parking spot. You will see people parking on the street. You will see people parking at the, um, police station. You'll see people parking like in not real parking spots in the library parking lot. So it's been insane. We've had an average each Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of 70 people at our storytimes. Our room capacity is 40. So it is tight in there. It is, it is tight. Thankfully, I mean, they're toddlers, so they're small, but it's been quite overwhelming. So our storytimes have been really busy, um, with extra families who would normally go to the post falls library for storytime coming to see us. And Ms. Erin is great. So I'm sure a lot of them will just stay forever. Um, so yeah, um, that's how our, our January and February have been quite busy and we're, we're still seeing that continuing into March.
Right.
Um, next slide, Michael. So I have not stopped talking about this since it happened. Um, the end of January, we had our new windows installed at the library. If you see in that first picture, I tried to take a comparison of one window that had been installed and one had, that had not. It's one of those things where you don't realize like how cloudy the windows were and how like, you know, silvery gray dingy they were looking. So, um, the windows look amazing. Um, next slide, I have some more pictures. So that's our juvenile section. And then we have our children's room and our meeting room. Um, so the rooms just feel so much brighter, so much more open. Um, I think it would cure your seasonal affective disorder just a little bit by coming to the library. It's just, it's so much brighter than it used to be. Um, so we are so happy to have our windows. Um, Jen's crew did amazing. Brian and Tim and John, they had someone onsite the entire time that the guys were there installing the windows in case we had any issues and to just, you know, make sure everything was going smoothly. We had massive tarps out through, um, from floor to ceiling throughout the library, keeping spaces closed off so that we didn't have any safety issues and also trying to help a little bit with the, the cold. So they did a phenomenal job on, um, administering this project for us. All right. Let's see. So we've already mentioned this, um, but Michaela and Erin were recognized with the Kias Visionary Services Award. So, um, there's a picture of them right there on the end with all of the other winners for the state. Um, next slide, Michael.
So in January and February, we started the, the board of trustees started looking at the, um, proposed policy changes for, um, public comment at our board meetings. And you should have gotten a copy of that in your documents from Jandy. And so this was just a slide showing the changes. We just made very minimal changes to the policy. We changed board room to meeting room. Um, it was, we just felt like the policy that was in place was serving us very similar to, identical to what happens here at the city council meetings. So these are the changes that we've proposed and, um, we are wondering what the council would like the next steps to be now that we've made revisions to one of the policies. So that's for council to establish.
So I, I guess my question is, so is this, is this a change, a policy change for libraries or a policy change for the board itself?
For the library.
Okay.
Yeah, we do the, yeah, the board does. And those, but those are at the board meetings, those, the public
Right, right. So I guess I would look to see if the council has any questions, um, or, or objections. Do we need to take this to a, a, a formal action item at a future meeting?
Yes. And that was the, the goal of this conversation is to let you know that this, uh, recommendation had been made through the board of trustees, uh, formal process. And it will come to you as an action item on a future meeting.
Great.
Quick, good question. Uh, Mark, can we number those to make sure we're keeping them in order? I, I just don't want to get into a situation where we're trying to remember which policy we're talking about here. And, um, I think it would be good from the, from the board to have this be, okay, proposed policy one or whatever.
I think they're all numbered.
Are they? Great. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next slide.
Oh, yes. So I'm sure you guys have heard about this before. Um, the library is doing a master gardener series at the library. Councilmember Dunn came to one of them. Um, we've now had two sessions. Our first session on vegetable gardening had 33 adults in attendance, which is really well attended for our, um, adult programs. Um, we also did our gardening for pollinators class. Um, it was on a Saturday. Um, so we're doing some on Thursday evenings and some on Saturday mornings. Um, we have some set for April and May, and we would just invite the community and the council members to come out and attend those classes.
Right.
Um, the other thing we wanted to give a shout out, um, about is our Spokane Symphony Program. Our friends of the library sponsor, um, sponsor purchasing tickets for the community to the Spokane Symphony. Um, we have three shows. Um, we had one in January and one in March. Our last one is coming up in April, April 21st. It's their 3 PM Sunday show. We have 40 tickets to these performances. Um, we've had our two shows and so far we've only had one ticket not claimed.
Right.
So that's 79 out of 80 people who have attended the symphony. Um, it's just great, um, that the friends can offer this to the community. Um, cause you know, symphony passes are expensive and it's something where now families, um, are able to, um, experience that.
I get to go on the 21st. I'm excited.
Um, we also do have continuing passes to the Mobius Children's Museum, um, where patrons can just come to the front desk and check out a pass. It's good for two adults and four kids to go to the Mobius Museum. Um, they check out for a week so they could go any day that week to the, um, children's museum. That is our most checked out item in the entire library is our Mobius Children's Museum pass. Um, we do also have a pass to the MAC, uh, Museum of Arts and Culture. It's good for two kids and, sorry, two adults and three kids, um, to attend the MAC. So these programs are all sponsored by our friends at the library. And then our last thing is, um, we wanted to kind of give you an update on where things are with our library projects, um, our new library. So, um, we, um, I have drafted an RFQ that's going out for a project manager to manage the library design project. So they'll be managing all aspects of our, um, project. It's going live in the Spokane Valley Herald on Friday, um, and applicants will have a month to send us their proposals. Um, the other thing I'm working on right now is applying for a la- library capital improvements grant from the State Department of Commerce. Um, we can apply for up to $2 million. Um, I spoke with the grants administrator and since the city purchased a building for 2.1 million. Um, I guess I should say this grant project is a matching grant. So you put in a certain amount of money and then the State Department of Commerce will put in a certain amount of money. Since the city put in $2.1 million to buy a library, um, we should be able to apply now for a $2 million grant to go towards our project. So, um, that application is due the beginning of April. Um, so we will be applying for that. Um, I am hopeful, um, but two of the grant requests that kind of, um, that they ask for is if your community is rural or distressed. And we don't meet those two criteria. So it's one of those things where there's $2 million on the table. We're going to go for it and see what happens.
And that decision you said comes out in
I want to say it's the end of July, beginning of August.
Great.
So we'll apply in April. We'll know by the end of the summer where we are. So
It's really exciting.
Yes. Um, and I think that's everything we had. Any questions?
Regarding that grant, if, uh, for some reason, uh, we, we don't get it or we don't get everything we were hoping for, is, is that a one-shot thing? Or could you apply for it in next year?
Um, it's a two-year cycle. So we would apply, we're applying in 2024. Um, we could apply again in 2026 if we were unsuccessful. So.
And Councilmember Kennedy was next.
Uh, thank you, Mary. Yeah. I'd, I'd like to relay a very short story, the benefit of the libraries overall, but absolutely a benefit to our Liberty Lake library. We have a four and a half year old granddaughter. And every time she comes around the house, she usually, if I'm not there, will say to grandma, well, where's grandpa? Says, well, he has an appointment and that's the standard answer. So here, a week or so ago, she was at the house and I asked her, I said, you, she, she wanted to go do something. The next day we would plan for it. So she asked me as a four and a half year old, what time? I said, we'll be tomorrow morning. She says, I have an appointment. And I looked at her mother and her grandmother and I chuckled and I thought, okay, what did a four and a half year old child have an appointment? So I asked her, what is your appointment? She looked at me with the smile of, but angel saying, I have story time.
Oh, that's so sweet.
And I looked and I go, you got me there, sweetheart. So great benefit.
Yes. Great. Any other questions? All right. Not saying, thanks for the great report. I may use a couple of your pieces of data for a quick trivia tonight on community page. We'll see.
Yeah, they do. Yes. No cheating.
All right. Next up Parks and Arts Commission. While you get me tonight. So, um, I've got a couple of slides. All right. Some updates on some items that we're working on. Um, we received a Smarty Board Communication sign, yeah, in the mail last week and crews will be looking at getting it installs. Uh, next slide, please. It'll show you kind of what the board looks like. So this is Uh, next slide, please. It'll show you kind of what the board looks like. So this is custom-made to Orchard Park. The goal will be to put one in each uh, other park in the outline years. Um, it is double-sided. It's gonna go in the more active area of the park, um, between the splash pad and the playground. So a child can go up to the board who maybe have, may have non-verbal. Not be able to communicate and they can point to these pictures to communicate with an adult. So whether it be a small child that can recognize a picture or a non-verbal person that, that isn't able to verbally communicate these boards. Um, this is, I, from what I'm understanding, this is the first board in this entire region, um, anything like this. And they, they are in Rowlett, Texas, is where it, yeah. So first of its kind in this area, which is very, very, uh, very exciting. Next slide.
Jen, can I just mention one thing? It might be worth sending out a press release to the, to the stations and to the newspaper about these since they're the first.
So, yeah, I, I've talked with David Gainer about that and the fact that we are the first, so he, he's gonna work on something. Yeah, because it's, it's pretty important. Um, we have the latest barrel uh, added to our collection on the far right. It was done by our own student commissioner, Allison Pegram. Uh, on the Parks and Arts Commission. She completed that barrel uh, just about a month or two ago. And what we discovered on the two barrels on the left was. They weren't clear-coated or treated and so they peeled pretty badly over the summer season, probably more than likely with the sprinklers hitting them. So we're going to strip them, steam clean them and send them back to the high school for another paint job next year. And we, with Allison's on the right, we went ahead and clear-coated that and we'll see if those last longer that way. So, next slide, please. Uh, the, the commission is working on a project. Um, they're calling it the Pavilion Park Historic Outlook. And what it is, is gonna be a kiosk that's gonna sit at the top of the bowl hill um, at Pavilion Park and tell the story of the mural. Um, there is a lot of in-depth and detail and story behind that mural. That a lot of people don't understand and there's a lot of history to it. So that, that historical outlook and um. Kiosk will tell that story. So they're working on funding that and getting that out this year. Yes. Does the artist know that this is happening? I'm sure he does. Okay, I was just curious. I'm sure he does, but yeah, we'll, we'll make sure he knows. Yeah. Next slide, please. Continuing discussions happening at the Trailhead Art Wall and Bench, including the long hallway now. There's potential for some art wraps, some murals, some photos, paintings, you name it. Um, they haven't quite decided what they're going to do in detail, but continuing, continuing discussion. And um, really focusing on the history of the area and the history of golf in this area. Next slide, please. We will be having Hoop Town Court and Skate Park dedication in probably late spring, uh, early summer. There's a little bit of work that needs to be done to, to do some touch-up. Um, we can't do that until the weather warms up. Probably gonna be May. And then uh, we'll let everybody know. It'll, we'll publish that, that we're gonna have a dedication out there. Hoop Town. Hoop Town is going to join us for that. Uh, Kramer Parkway Utility Box Wraps are on hold until Washed Out releases uh, those areas to the city. And then there's discussion about doing a Liberty Lake Together sculpture similar to, not necessarily in style, but similar to what they did at Rocky Hill Park. Uh, they're talking about putting together a call to artists for something, some piece of artwork over on the Kramer Parkway corner. Um, it's not even landscaped yet, so we would landscape it. Simple turf, nothing fancy, nothing con- congregational in the sense, um, and then they would put a sculpture in there. And then they are looking forward to um, a, a discussion with City Council similar to what the Community Engagement Commission has done with you all. Uh, just to kind of open the lines of communication and. Provide some detail to the things they're working on and then solicit feedback in further detail than they can do in these council meetings. So. I think we're looking forward to a workshop together in May or June. I think that's the last slide. Any questions for Jen? Any questions?
I've got a question for Kyle about the art. Um, we had talked at one point to make su- about making sure that our artwork is insured as well. And I know our carrier is making the rounds. Um, is that something that you guys have already talked to them about or is on the list?
So we build that into the replacement value of each, yeah.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Um, so the workshop would be about the public art for the Kramer?
Yeah, and, and I think that um. Dare I summarize what they're looking for, but I think they just want feedback from the commission on the projects they're doing. Um, on ideas that you might have for projects that are up and coming, projects on the unfunded project list of the CFP. Just have an open discussion, um, so that they're all on the same page as, as the, as the council.
Great. Okay, thanks for the report.
Thank you.
Okay, last but not least, Liberty Lake Southern Water District. Do we have anybody? I don't. Kyle's, Michael's gonna check the list here. Nope. Not at this time. Okay, so we'll skip that one. And we are moving on to the workshop discussion about the Liberty Lake Municipal Library Funding. Now this came up during the budget process. Um, amid some possible confusion of the language of, of funding and I know the staff has had lots of meetings. And have come back with um, some feedback and recommendations. So I'll turn it over to Mark.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And uh, as the mayor pointed out, this was a discussion that. Was had essentially during the December fifth uh, city council meeting. And so. Councilmember Ball at that point in time was, was not on the council, was not seated on the council. And so. Um, for her benefit, just going back and touching on this review very quickly. Uh, the council essentially raised uh, the concern during that time regarding the library funding. Um, and, and we've categorized the concerns in a three main uh, themes that you see there. And that was. Uh, whether or not, and Michael, if you can cue this up so the audience can see as we're moving along, that would be great as well. Um, whether the city is properly count, uh, calculating the overall annual budgetary appropriation. Um, and that clause there is in quotes because that's directly out of Section Three of Ordinance One Nineteen B. Which at the time was the ordinance in effect. Um, and then number two, whether the library capital should be removed from the expenses covered by the twenty-three point eight percent. And I'll point out here that in, in the ordinance, library capital is referring to the cap, library capital fund. Um, and that'll become more relevant as we get deeper into the presentation. And then whether the city's budget is aligned with the spirit of the ordinance. And so. With those three um, concerns in mind, uh, the staff kind of was directed at that point to bring back some, to do some analysis. And bring back some recommendations during the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. And so with this being the last uh, council meeting of the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. We targeted tonight to bring back um, the results of the analysis in our recommendation. And so. Shortly after that discussion at the same meeting, council approved Ordinance One Nineteen D. Uh, which took effect in January of twenty twenty-four. If you can go to the next slide, Michael. And, and so in your packet, you've got. The language from Ordinance One Nineteen D, which is the ordinance that is currently in effect. Um, and the title of that is establishing the Liberty Lake Public Library. And I've put uh, segments of Section Two and Section Three uh, in there so you can refer back to them throughout the presentation. Um, and have them in front of you. And I don't want to read uh, these sections to you word for word, but the. The key piece of Section Two is in paragraph B where it talks about the council. Um, having the discretion, which uh, may be in the best interest of the library. To essentially change the total appropriations provided uh, to the Liberty Lake Public Library. Provided that that's done via ordinance. And so if you flip over now and, Michael, if you can go to the next slide, you'll see Section Three. Um, and this is the section that, of the ordinance that governs the annual budget and budgeting process. And this is the section that talks about the establishment of the twenty-three point eight percent. Um, being originally tied back to the two thousand and one, um, essentially fifty cents. Uh, of the total property tax levy rate. And, and keep that phrase in mind, total property tax levy rate. You're gonna see that on a table that we're gonna present in, in a few minutes. And so those are the two key pieces of the ordinance. Um, that we are talking about. And it's essentially that phrase, the total property tax levy rate. That caused the concern about the calculation of the budget. And so through um, the. Analysis, what we want to do is kind of walk you through um, the history of these ordinances. As they relate to the creation and oversight of the tax increment financing area. And these two things don't normally have any real relationship with one another. The reason that they're presented on this timeline is because part of the discussion was. Whether or not the budget should be based on the total property tax levy rate or the. Tax levy rate after the TIF distribution had been calculated. And so just showing all of these on a timeline uh, will, I think, be uh, somewhat instructive. And so if you start over on the left. Uh, back in October of two thousand and three, Ordinance One Nineteen was adopted. And put into effect. That was the original uh, ordinance establishing the library. And then you go through many years, six years, six plus years, and you have three resolutions that are related to. The creation of a community revitalization financing tool with a tax increment area agreement. And then you establish priorities for that increment area. And then you review spending uh, strategies for the tax increment finance. Revenue that comes in from that uh, increment area. And so all of those things were put into place between. The effective date of Ordinance One Nineteen and then you fast forward to July of twenty twelve. Um, and Ordinance One Nineteen A was put into effect, which replaced Ordinance One Nineteen. And the key piece to keep in mind there, and we'll show you this in a, in a uh, slide in a moment. Uh, for comparison's sake, this is the ordinance that replaced the language that essentially said. Uh, the, the city council will establish the budget for the library to the language that you see today. Um, regarding the twenty-three point eight percent and the total um, tax levy rate. Um, and so Ordinance One Nineteen A goes into effect in July of twenty twelve. Ordinance One Nineteen B goes into effect um, in February twenty fifteen that preserves that language about the budget. Um, and then April of twenty twenty, we had a uh, restated community vital- revitalization financing and tax increment area. Agreement um, that passed. And then in between those things, in August of twenty twenty-two. Uh, the city elected to use ARPA funds and some funds from uh, REIT. And some other places to purchase the building on Mission Avenue. Uh, that will eventually become the new Liberty Lake Library. And then uh, as we were just talking about, Ordinance One Nineteen D was. Uh, voted on and put into effect in January of twenty twenty-four. So. Across the timeline, you see the relationship between the passage of the library ordinances and the passage of the revolu- uh, resolutions. Establishing and changing uh, the tax increment finance area and program. If you go to the next slide, you'll see uh, the Section Three uh, summary of the annual budget paragraphs. Going uh, from Ordinance One Nineteen A from October of two thousand and three, all the way down to Ordinance One Nineteen D, which is in effect now. Uh, that was put into effect in January of twenty twenty-four. And with the revision of. One Nineteen A to One Nineteen B and then the revision of One Nineteen B to One Nineteen D. The Section Three Annual Budget Language stayed exactly the same. So it's been the same language regarding the annual budget. Uh, between July of twenty twenty, uh, twenty twelve and now uh, March of twenty twenty-four. And so with that, I'm going to pivot and you'll see the next couple of slides presenting a table of information about the tax levy. The tax levy rate, the library budget, the variance. And Kyle is gonna walk you through the numbers. Um, and there's a lot of numbers. And so we wanted to put this in front of you so you could see the numbers and not worry about. What's on the screen as we go through this. And so I'm gonna turn the mic over to Kyle to walk you through these next couple of slides.
Excellent. Okay, thank you, Mark. Uh, so we started at uh, twenty thirteen. On the heels of the adoption uh, of the language implementing the twenty-one point three percent. Uh, of, of the total property tax levy rate for library purposes. And so you're gonna see a lot of numbers on this slide and the next slide. Uh, the rows will go kind of one by one, but this is essentially just to illustrate kind of a, as we put a bow on this. What, what city staff has, has deemed as, as compliance with the ordinance. Uh, and so we'll start with the total property tax levy as you see up there. We have our levy rate per one thousand dollars of assessed value. And then that gives us with the twenty-three point eight percent. The levy rate for library operations. And so that fourth column there is total. Allocations for library activities based on Ordinance One Nineteen A year over year. And obviously, the, the, the row below that is actual appropriations, expenditures budgeted each year. And you see that variance below that uh, indicating compliance with the ordinance. And we're not allocating more. Uh, expenses than we have revenues earmarked for library operations in each. Of these years. And, and on the heels of that, the budget adoption vote also plays a role in this. In the event that that variance ever becomes negative, we have uh, a piece of that ordinance. Uh, that allows uh, council to make revisions to uh, library appropriations as they see fit. On a majority plus one basis. And so that is why you see the budget adoption vote here. That really allows council on a year-over-year basis to scrutinize uh, library uh, revenue and library. Uh, expenditures uh, to ensure compliance on an ongoing basis. And to make any decisions should that not, should that compliance not be uh. Matched uh, according to the ordinance uh, about how we want to adopt an annual budget for library operations going forward. So. Uh, if we transition to the next slide. Uh, so, so this is essentially the same. And so, so what we're seeing on that bottom row here is just what staff has deemed as compliance. Uh, in relation to the ordinance and, and library operations and, and funding. And so. You can see we have, you know, a positive variance across the board. And the next three slides that you're gonna see is essentially just. Some quick pieces of information that city staff has essentially drawn from, from this review. And so what we see is since the adoption of Ordinance One Nineteen A, we have had twelve annual budget cycles and twenty-three point eight percent of the levy rate. Uh, has been greater than the library adopted budget. Uh, next slide, please. So this one, we'll want to draw a little bit of attention to the budget adopted by a majority plus one. This only comes into play if there's a variance and we. Deem that there isn't, you know, substantial compliance with the ordinance. And so if we go back two slides to twenty sixteen. We can see that the budget adoption vote was four zero. So we just had some absences during that. And so. That was just a tech, essentially a, a technicality as to potentially why that wasn't a, a majority plus one. Uh, next slide. And so what you see for the twelve-year history is a positive variance of close to seven hundred thousand dollars between. What the ordinance uh, allows for, for uh, um, for revenue and what the adopted budget year-over-year has been. Next slide, please. So with that said, and, and I'll turn it back over to Mark here, but uh, in, in our review. Um, based on the information we've provided you here and that we've seen, um, we are not recommending any, any change to the funding mechanism. We, we will give, and we do every year, uh, the opportunity for, for council to scrutinize Ordinance One Nineteen D. And its compliance with uh, that levy rate and allocations and, and available funding during the annual budget cycle.
Thanks, Kyle. And so just to kind of wrap that up, but a- as we went through the analysis and we had the discussions about, you know. Do, do we want to go in and we want to refine the number or uh, recommend removing the number? I'm talking about the twenty-three point eight percent. Um, a- as, as we kept coming back and looking at the performance year-over-year. There really isn't a structural issue uh, with, with the ordinance in the way that it, it accounts for the budget for the library. And so. Because of that, it's our recommendation that we don't change that mechanism at this time.
Questions, comments? I'm sure there will be. Councilmember Dunn.
So, Mark, in your analysis from the one nineteen A, is there anything magic about twenty-three point eight? Or how do you think that was arrived at at the original one nineteen A?
So it sounds like, and I think Councilmember Van Orman can provide some context here. In, in two thousand and one, that, so they, in. However, Ordinance One Nineteen A was developed, they looked back at two thousand and one and at the time. The, the budget that would have been adequate to fund the library was deemed to be some number that related to fifty. was deemed to be some number that related to 50 cents of the tax levy rate. And that 50 cents then translated to 23.8% of the levy.
That's exactly right.
And so that's how it was derived.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Mark, so a couple of questions here, and Kyle as, as well. So if, I, I think part of the confusion that, that at least I'm having, I'm not sure if other council members are having as well, is whether the 23.8 is a floor or a ceiling. And so if it's a floor, we have not been following the ordinance since, when, since it was adopted, based on these numbers that you're giving us. I mean, we've been consistently underfunding the library. Some years, it's $88,000 in this last budgeted year, 2024, it was by $10,000. So I guess, guess my concern is that that we really have no way of knowing unless we go back in, into the minds of the city council at the time that they originally put this in, whether that was intended to be that floor or ceiling. I, I, to me, it reads as if it is a floor and not, we can't go above the 23.8%. But I, I guess I'm, I'm asking for your thoughts on that. And then I guess my second question is, the, does the, and maybe this is a question for Sean. Does the 23.8% number, i- if we were to get into a situation where we had a huge economic downturn and something were to happen and we had to cut a bunch of city expenses, does dollar one, based on that language of 23.8%, does dollar one have to go to the, the library?
I, I guess there'd probably be multiple appropriations that would have to be considered. So I, I don't know if I can answer the question of dollar one. But let me back up here for at least my recollection, and Wendy can chime in too. My recollection from the reason that was going on between the initial ordinance that was passed and the subsequent ordinance is because of the variations that could happen each year. And there was an economic issue going on. And there was difficulty for the library to know what the budgeting was going to be. So the 23.8% was arrived as a result of trying to make sure there was more of a set budgetary amount moving forward. And I believe, if I recall, the language that was up there said it shall not exceed 23.8%. So if that's in fact what the ordinance said, then I would say that would be more of a ceiling than a floor.
Well, it says, I mean, the latest one, the, the 119D says the shall cover, the 23.8% sum shall cover expenses for library operations, library capital, administrative support.
Isn't subsection B?
Shall be. Shall be 23.8.
Yeah. So, so in my recollection, the intent was for it to be really a ceiling to not go over that. And, and if you, and I'm a little confused, and maybe I just didn't understand the way you said it, Chris.
Can you go back a couple of slides?
About when you said we were underfunding, but if you look at, the numbers show that we're, they're spending less than they're allocated.
Right.
Which is perfect, which is, which is really how it should be.
Yeah. And, and that's fine. I'm just saying, if it's, if it's intended to be the floor, the 23.8, then, and we're obligated to follow the ordinance, then the number that we're budgeting for the library is under that 23.8. Because loo- look at the 20-
Oh, I see, I see what you mean. So, so we're providing, we're providing 23.8, but Janie's not spending as much as she could, which is good.
Right. But I mean, that's consistent every year.
Yeah.
You know, so I would, I would suggest that, okay, if we're going to adopt a library button, uh, budget, and the interpretation is going to be the floor of 23.8 or the ceiling, you know, either one, then if it's going to be the floor, it's got to be above that, that 23.8.
And in, in respect of, I shouldn't-
Go ahead.
In respect of what we had began with, 50 cents per thousand is what libraries were getting.
Right.
So that was the ceiling, wasn't the ground floor, it was the ceiling. And I, if I recall through all the conversations that we've had, capital, the capital building that we just purchased is the city's. It's not necessarily the library's. But it's a city, but the capital improvements like windows and so forth, that's included in that 23.8.
Okay. So if that's the case, then when we go, when, when Jandy goes out to get the RFP for the, the project, then are we going to be over the 23.8?
Again, that, that, that's a city, that goes to the city building. The library doesn't own the building, the city does. So that project management and, and any money for that retrofit is going to be part of the city's capital facility, but not out of the library budget.
So, so I think it's, it's also important to consider that. And, and I would prefer to think of the, at this point in time, whatever the original contemplation was, at this point in time, I would prefer to think of the 23.8% as a target. And the ordinance in Section 2 specifically gives council the authority to go above or, or below the target based on conditions and what's happening. And so in a given year, and as Kyle pointed out in, in the table, through those 12 budgeting cycles, in those given years, there, there wasn't a special project or a, a situation that occurred where the requested budget exceeded the 23.8%. So it wasn't an issue. In a year where that may be the case, like when we're bringing a project manager and a construction, a design, build, construction contract in front of you, that may be the case. And so Section 2 would allow through the passage of an ordinance for council to increase the appropriation to whatever number it felt was appropriate, even to exceed the 23.8%.
Councilmember Van Orman, then?
But again, when we're looking at the building itself and repairs to this newly purchased building, this is a city's building. It has nothing to do with the library's budget. It shouldn't have anything to do with the budget.
Yeah. And, and I think that is a matter for discussion. But whether I, the response, I think that, that I wanted to impress upon the council is whether council landed on one side or the other of that, whether it was considered a city facility or a library facility, and the expenses were city expenses versus library expenses. The, the ordinance, as it is written now and in effect now, would give council the authority to make that decision through its passage of the budget and any subsequent ordinance that would appropriate dollars.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you. I'm looking, I'm looking for clarification in one thing and then a comment on the other. It's always been my understanding from, I ha- I have more hours sitting out there than I have sitting here. One thing I've heard for years and years, it seemed to be on both sides of the, the dais, that property tax is designed to take care of all of our public safety, police and library. Am I wrong there?
It's, well, it covers all the library and part of the police.
And fire, what is it?
Fire, no, fire is separate.
Fire levy.
Yeah, fire levy separate. So yeah, so property tax covers the library and about, I think the last time I calculated was about 40% of the PD budget.
Okay. Because both budgets have increased because as we grow, we're starting our public safety halves. What I find interesting is that what I, what I try to look at is what's, what's the simplest way that we can move forward? And I've seen a lot of discussion, is 23.8, is it the top, is it the bottom, things like that, right there? We're, we don't have a library. We're going to keep the library now that something devastating happens. I'd be more comfortable just eliminating 23.8 completely and look at each year, we're going to look at what does the library need? Just we look at what does the employees' wages and retirement take? What does it take for the roads? What does it take for everything? To look at and say, okay, here's what it's going to cost us to be in the library business and get away from the percentage because we're going to take care of it. In doing so, I think what eliminates is confusion and discussion come between citizens and council members that, well, I think it should be this, I think it should be that. Bottom line, do we want a library? Yes, we do. Bottom line, we, we going to continue to grow the library as the, the city grows? Yes, we are. If we, that's eliminated the 23.8, that discussion is no longer we have to waste our time on. We're not, what we're now looking at is that it's X number of dollars around the library. Once we have the building and stuff in there, now we're at X. And we're going to take care of X. So I'm trying to make it simple.
Right.
Uh, just a point of clarification. So Section 2B provided the same as done by ordinance, we're talking about the budget ordinance essentially, right?
Or any, any other ordinance to amend or whatever, yes.
Okay. I, I would just speak in favor of leaving the language as a percentage because I think the wisdom there is based on a moment in time, the percentage of the property tax rate. So, so now we've, we've established at that one point in time, now we've established a percentage that it seems appropriate that if that percentage of the property tax would fund the library, that it would continue to do so. And I like the, I like the language that Mark used in, in reference to that being a target because we clearly have the ability to increase it, decrease it, revoke, recall. So we have the ability to adjust that accordingly. And that can be as simple as a, you know, budget ordinance that we do every year.
Sorry for the side conversation here. Maybe, maybe next. We'll hold on real quick with, making sure we got other points here. Councilmember, all the times.
Hey, Councilmember Kurtz has her hand up. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Do you want?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to ask if Councilmember Van Orman talked about the 23.8 being sort of what was libraries were expecting at the time that the ordinance was created back in the day. And I wanted to see if, if, are we consistent still with other libraries? I think that's my first question, then I had a follow-up.
So in terms of the total budget, I don't know that we did any comparative analysis with, with other libraries. We stuck to the analysis comparing year-over-year, the, the budget request versus the, 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 the ordinance prescribed number. If you have any anecdotal information that may help answer Councilmember Kurtz's question.
Kyle, wait as well, because we'd always do the comparison every year between our neighboring jurisdictions and Spokane Valley has their property tax plus 50 cents for the library. Is that changed?
The only thing I know anecdotally is just that a lot of libraries are struggling right now with the economic downturn and are facing a lot of budget cuts. So we are very blessed in talking from, I went to a meeting in January with other librarians, all the other directors in the state, and a lot of them were looking at having to close branches or limit hours, trying not to lay off staff. So the only thing I have to add right now is that we are very lucky and very fortunate in the budgets that we have right now here in Liberty Lake. I want to say we, they did a budget analysis of other libraries in 2019 with our library community assessment that we did. I just don't have any of those numbers in front of me.
A little outdated.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's been five years, so it probably would be moot anyway.
Yeah. Well, and I think that, you know, that, that was one of the main points of putting the percentage in there. So you, like Mark said, the word target is probably the best word. So you know, you have a good approximation every year when you start your budget process in, you know, May, June, what you, what you, what you know, your, your limit is going to be that you're, you're probably going to be able to spend. And I think that, that was the really, really the main intent behind clarifying that. Because there was such fluctuation for a while, because we were going through the, the downturns in '29, '10, and '11. So there was, you know, it was really hard to plan.
And that's basically what I wanted to address is the fact that in 2009, 2010, we were looking at, you know, 24 employees and what we needed to cut just to stay meeting payroll.
Yeah.
So having something in there of 23.8% kind of gave the library, okay, this is what you can count on and hoping that we would never have to do that again.
Okay, so. All right. So real quick, so we haven't heard from Councilmember Ball. Did you have any questions? You will defer to later.
Yeah, defer to later.
And I know, Janice, Councilmember Kurtz, you still had your hand up. Did you have a second part to what you were at, had asked? I apologize.
Oh, no, that's okay. I just wanted to echo what Councilmember Spencer said and also what Councilmember Van Orman have said. And what Mark and Kyle have said too, just that the 23.8, I think, is a good target point. I think that, again, like Councilmember Spencer said, we can adjust it up or down based on need, which I think was what Councilmember Kennedy was getting to. We can already do that the way the ordinance is written. So I'm in favor of leaving it the way it is because it does seem to meet our need. And we do have the ability to change that and adjust it through the budget season or as needed during the year. So I think we do have, the way it's written now, great flexibility to meet the demand and adjust things along the way during the year.
Thank you. I think we had Mayor Protem and then Councilmember.
Just two comments. One, I, I don't disagree that using the phrase target or, or saying that this is a target is a good way to do it. My challenge is with the word shall. That's in there. It doesn't say we should, it doesn't say we should target. It says we shall appropriate, or we shall use this as the percentage the city will use in establishing library funding in future years. So that's one of my concerns. I mean, technically, we're not following that because it says we shall use the 23.8%. The second thing is that I, I would, I would submit to everybody in the room that the 23.8%, as we've all talked about, came from 2001. I mean, that's, that was 22 and a half years ago. So who's to say that it shouldn't be 26% or 27% or 30%? I mean, yes, we can go up from there, but I'm just saying that I appreciate the fact that we're saying that that should be the target, but I would just respectfully submit to everyone that that's not what that says. And, and secondarily, perhaps it should be a little bit more just based on the overall finances and the cost of doing business in the past 22 years.
Um, I think we had Councilmember Dunn first.
Uh, yeah, I just want to speak in support of the staff's recommendation that the language be retained as it is. I recognize and respect the percentage included as just a target or guideline for what the city's intents are and that the language in the ordinance allows variance to it to the council's preference. So I believe the language of the ordinance is appropriate. Thanks for the analysis.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I have a, I have a vision of the city and also how the library plays with that. When this library was formed in 2001, 23 years ago, it's not the same library that it is today. Libraries have changed because of this right here. Libraries in 23 years ago was that that's where you came to get the books, get the literature, to do your homework, do studies and things of the sort here. This has replaced a-
Thank you. Yeah, this is a little closer.
This has replaced a lot of that, but we shouldn't be eliminated from that. My vision for our library is just not a library, but a community center, gathering space. Since I've been a resident of this city, I've heard about we're going to have a community center gathering place. And there's always been a buzzword how we can spend money at the trailhead, do all this type of stuff, and yet the space kept getting smaller and smaller. Now we're talking about we bought a building to be able to expand over there on it. What I don't want to do down the road, and it could be as short as a few years, for us to suddenly sit here because of economic or not economic, to start looking at this and saying, well, you know what? Libraries aren't what they used to be, and maybe we shouldn't be in the library business. Start vision now what it will become, how we can have individuals involved. My four-and-a-half-year-old granddaughter, I, I envision that she's going to be involved where it's a community center, it's a gathering place, more than just for the books. That's what I envisioned. I don't want to hamper the growth of this city or council members at 23.8%. What I want to look at is put at the same level that we look at our roads, what we look at, the things I've already said. I'm in favor of eliminating it and looking at what we want to get accomplished and what does it cost? And do we have a revenue to do that? Thank you.
And Councilmember Kurtz, you got your hand up still. I didn't know if that was new or old.
Oh, no, I put it down and I raised it back up again. I wanted to check in with Sean about Mayor Protem, Cargill had talked about being in violation of the ordinance. And just checking in with Sean, because it doesn't seem like we are, but I wanted to get his opinion on that. If we've been passing our budget via ordinance that increases the funding, does that then negate the issue that we are violating this ordinance because we've done that increase or decrease in funding through a budget ordinance process?
No, I wouldn't think so. I mean, obviously, we'd go back and look, but I think there's a couple of things to, I'm not- No, I wouldn't think so. I mean, obviously we'd go back and look, but I think there's a couple of things to, I'm going to answer it a different way in, in reading the language. So. The way I read subsection B in section three, twenty-three point, twenty-three point eight percent, some, some shall cover expenses. For those various things. To me, that is a ceiling, not a floor. It's saying that's within that twenty-three point eight percent, that's supposed to cover all the expenses. You're not to work your way over that. So to the extent that. You have it there, that's fine. However, the caveat to that, and I don't know what the current level is right now, but in subsection A. The language at the end of the first sentence says, as now or hereafter amended. So that fifty cents wasn't meant necessarily to stay the duration. It was meant it could be changed. So in the future. As of the, when the original ordinance was passed, it was fifty cents. If it was sixty cents or seventy cents or a dollar, whatever it may be in the future, that's what hereafter amended means because that could potentially change. So from the perspective of the percentage. And what the original amount is, you're keeping that in mind, but the twenty-three point eight percent was to represent. The same percentage, but that fifty cents may change as you go for, go into the future, which potentially changed the budgetary aspect of it. So that's the way I read it. And, and that's my recollection from back when we. Were having the discussion about what the language was be and how that number got originally established.
Did that help? Councilmember Kurtz?
Well, I think it helped. I just, um. I just want to, uh, make sure that, um, if there's any concern that we're violating the ordinance because of the shallow part. It just didn't seem like it to me, but I think Sean's answer makes sense. So I just wanted to ask that question. So we're all kind of on the same page.
Right. All right. I think we've got councilmember Spencer next.
Yeah. So, um, just to clarify first before, um, I make my statement. So, uh, in this packet here, ordinance one nineteen D. Uh, section three, um, so that I guess this is our fourth page in, um. Which is where we're at here. So it, it says that, uh, in that first sentence. Uh, appropriation for the library shall be based upon the original fifty cents per thousand. But then when we go to the history, it almost looks like it's. It's a summarization of those two, um, A and B in section three. Is that right?
It is. It's a paraphrase in, in the other side. Yes.
Okay. So I think, I think we were looking at that originally as that's the language where it says the overall annual budgetary approach. Appropriation for the library shall be, um, where, you know, in the actual ordinance language, it says shall be based upon. And then it says it shall cover the expenses like Sean was saying. So it, it seems as though, um, we have not been in violation because of the fact that, um. That it allows us, um, in section two, to increase, decrease, revoke, recall, uh, through a, uh, an approved ordinance.
I think we've got councilmember Ball next. Thanks, councilmember Spencer.
So I have a question. So where did the fifty cents come from? Because I had written in notes earlier from when it wasn't on council, when I was just observing. That that was a county rule at the time. Is that correct? I mean, where?
Councilmember Van Orman is better equipped to answer that since she was part of the founding.
Where did fifty cents come from? Through Washington State, all the libraries were basically at fifty cents per thousand.
Okay.
And then it went on to discuss, you know, what all of the other. Service departments. So that's where it was based off.
Okay, is that? Well, we just remember we have people online who can't hear.
Is it still fifty cents? Does anybody know? I believe that it's still fifty cents. Uh, City of Spokane Valley.
And it plus fifty percent?
I mean, there, there may be tax rates that are fifty percent, but if you look at our levy rate. Our levy rate has changed significantly. And so the percentage that that represents has remained constant. And, and as the pie has grown bigger, twenty-three point eight percent represents a larger slice of the pie.
Right.
But the fifty cents has shrunk over time.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
And that's the intent. That's, that's what I'm talking about with here. That's the intent of as now or hereafter amended. With regard to the fifty cents originally, because it could change and it has changed. But the twenty-three point eight percent is what's to stay the same relative to covering the expenses.
Right. And the, be by using the percentage that helps account for some of that inflation. Because our property tax. Collected gets, gets bigger as, as we grow. All right. Do we have any other comments from the council? Because this is just, this is just a workshop at this point. That's not expensive.
I guess I would just ask, um, to Jandy, do you feel like you're being appropriately funded? Uh, uh, clearly you're spending less than what we are, uh, making available. So I, I think we're, we're striking a good balance.
So, um. So a lot, lots, lots of comments. I guess, uh. Go ahead and can we go ahead and take a, a vote as to whether or not we want to take any further action? That appropriate?
If you want to, I mean, if there's enough people to say, no, I don't know that you need to formally do it, but if you want to do that, you can do that as well.
So, um.
What, mayor, can I just? So, uh, just based on the comments of the council, obviously there's not the appetite to change it, but I, I'm wondering if. If there would be an appetite to just change the word shall to should. And if that covers the concern that we're talking about here. And maybe that's a question for you, Sean.
I would say you can do that, yes. Um, I don't know from a legal perspective, it will make a difference. Because should is ultimately going to probably be mandatory as much as shall is. From the standpoint of the, the difference would be between shall and may. Is the difference, the difference between shall and should is very similar.
Okay.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Uh, tha- thank you, Mayor. Because this is under workshop discussion, our recommendation would be is we leave it at that. We've come up with a lot of different ideas, things that we can think about. And I think taking two weeks to think about this, if we won't put it on the next agenda, would be appropriate. I know that if the pleasure of the council wants to vote on it tonight, we could certainly do that. But I think because of the, all this discussion, I would like to hear something from the public. If they want to come forward and make some comments on it. So I think easily a two week. Wait on this to think about all the options. Would be appropriate.
And so I guess, why don't I just, why don't I just do this? And it's not. So it's trying to find out whether or not we're going to take an action. Is there anybody, um. Opposed to circling back in two weeks? Doesn't look like it. All right, let's, let's. Do that. And then that way we can have the, a, a final thumbs up or thumbs down on a change. Sound good?
Mark, did we, did we, um. Did we determine the, the question, the answer to the question that, um, former councilmember Foyer had about. Whether this is supposed to be the total. Um, or the, uh, the number we get back from the county. I mean, it seems to me it's the total, but I just want to make sure that.
So, uh, yes, great question. Uh, we kind of glossed over that as we were talking about the timeline. Michael, if you can go back to the slide with the timeline on it. So the, the ordinance says, uh, total. Tax, property tax levy rate. Is the way that it's worded. And so, um, the question was whether that should represent the total. Tax levy when you apply the rate. Um, or a portion of that after the TIF distribution is made. And so, um, as you can see from the timeline, all of those, uh, TIF actions, those resolutions that occurred between. Um, two thousand and three and two thousand and twelve, when ordinance one nineteen A was put into effect with the language of the twenty-three point eight percent. Those things were already there, right? The TIF. Uh, area was already there and, and collections were being made against it. And so. From the time that ordinance one nineteen A was put into effect. We were, the city was applying the total tax levy rate to mean the total, the overall total, not a portion of the total. And so, um, from July of twenty twelve, starting in budget year thirteen, all the way through budget twenty twenty-four, which was adopted on December the fifth. That was the calculation that was made. It was the total property tax levy rate. Um, applied against the entire levy.
Okay. And is it your recommendation and Kyle's as well then? That we do not need any language that makes that clear added to these sections either?
We, we don't believe that there's any clarif- it, it would. Clarifying that would require really technical language. And, and we think that. For the same reasons that we've provided answers in other pieces of the conversation, the section two of the ordinance covers. Any. A percentage increase or decrease that that would represent in the budget. And you, so you would already have the mechanism to increase or decrease the appropriation. Based on what the budget request was.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Seeing any o- other hands, we'll go ahead and move on to general business consent agenda.
Uh, mayor, I'll make a motion to approve general business consent agenda items. A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L. M, N, O, P. No, there's no M, N, O, P.
All right, we've got a motion and a second by councilmember Dunn.
I do have a question in regards to L. Unfortunately, that's the last one we have. L.
Okay.
You asked a question now or?
Well, so then, but that would require, we need to move that over down to action items, because things on the consent agenda don't. Have discussion or questions.
Um. I'll, I'll, I'll delay the question. Not a problem.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second, um, to approve consent agenda items A through L. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Right, motion passes now seven zero. Councilmember Kurtz here.
Uh, make a motion to approve general business item eleven A, authorizing the mayor to sign the updated Axon contract. For the Liberty Lake Police Department.
I have a second by councilmember Spencer. Um, and A, can we get rid of the slide? And B, do we have, um, Chief Simmons here? If not. Deputy chief is here to answer any questions. Okay.
G Simmons is online, but I'll, I'll be happy and willing to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Are there any questions for deputy chief?
And?
Guess not. Thanks for, thanks for getting up and joining us.
Thanks for all your input.
All right. Well, the, the, just, just from, from my standpoint, this is, this is a great addition and huge, huge upgrade. To the, uh, to the technical resources that the PD will have with, with regards to, um, non-lethal options.
Okay, one more piece. I'd just like to thank Jared for staying online with us this long for wait, answering any questions. So our representative from Axon was online with us.
I couldn't see him. All right. Thank you, Tim, too. All right. So all in favor of approving the updated Axon contract, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? My motion passes seven zero.
Uh, make a motion to approve general business item eleven D, confirming the mayor's reappointment of Shannon. Deonie A. Is that how you pronounce that? Okay. What Kyle said, uh, to the lodging tax advisory committee for a two-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from councilmember Van Orman. Any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor of confirming reappointment of Shannon to the lodging tax advisory committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
All right. Any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero.
Make a motion to approve general business item eleven C, confirming the mayor's reappointment of David Heimbaugh to the. Lodging tax advisory committee for a two-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
And a second from councilmember Spencer. Any questions on that reappointment? Representing the hub. All right. Not hearing any. All those in favor of re, of confirming reappointment of David Heimball, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? My motion passes seven zero.
And motion to approve general business item eleven D. Confirming the mayor's reappointment of councilmember Van Orman. To the lodging tax advisory committee for a two-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Do we have a second?
I refrained from that one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from councilmember Spencer. So I'm assuming that Mayor Van, councilmember Van Orman will be abstaining from this. All right. So those in favor of approving reappointment of councilmember Van Orman, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes six zero with one plus one abstention. All right, council comments. Moving right along. Anything additional? Councilmember Kennedy.
I tell you, I'm going to love this one. This is in reference to, um. The citizens' rights to come forward. And complain about their government, if they like it or don't like it. Or if they have the right to ask to look at our records on who we call and where the phone calls are and things of the sort here. I support that. There was a, there's an obvious reason why that was there. I guess what I take, have a challenge with. Is when we have a citizen come forward in our last meeting. And questioned by name four individuals. Who showed that they had phone records back and forth. Now, I would have been able to handle that statement a lot easier if I would have heard that the individual or any individuals. Had asked for all the records of all the elected officials. And not just singling out four individuals and say, I don't want to go to MRSC. Uh, but I'm just trying to do the best I can for you. That has to apply to every one of us. Every single one of us. The law is very, very clear. That what we can't do is take action. And who could clarify that better? Anybody else who's going to be our attorney with this? Now, there's nothing that says that we cannot get together, all of us at any time. Outside of the meeting. We can discuss. Uh, ordinances, resolutions, policies and procedures. What we can't do is make decisions. Because that's where the legality comes into it. Now I see some elected officials shaking their head. And that's because we all have opinions. I think what we can do is maybe have legal look at something like this, because I think where the challenge comes is it for citizens. And even councilmembers who are not totally aware of what you can and cannot do. Uh, Councilman Kurtz, some meeting ago, three or four, made a great statement. Her comment was that she encouraged councilmembers to get together with other councilmembers. Have a coffee, go to lunch, get to know those individuals. I have no challenge ever showing who I'm calling. But the records simply show that you called somebody. There is nothing there that says what the discussion was. Now, my records, I have records where I have called quite often different councilmembers over the years. And my purpose was to find out who these people are. I want to know who I'm working with. I want to know that, uh, their family, where they were raised, their children, things of the sort here. Because the more I can visit with them, the more I become comfortable realizing that I can learn from them. I have gained more knowledge in life by associating with people who disagree with me. Than those that agree with me. Quite honestly, to get people around me to agree with me doesn't help me grow. What does help is somebody says, Mike, I think you're wrong. Let's talk about it. Because many times it comes up, I go, you know what? That's a good point. I didn't think about that. So I take exception when I would show that I called any council member. That right away that a citizen or another elected official would look at and say, well, Mike and this individual is making some decisions here. That's not necessarily true. So let's keep an open mind. Let's don't get where we pigeonhole individuals. If again, it would have been that all councilmembers' names have been mentioned. I would have been more comfortable with the comments versus four being sectioned out to imply that what they were doing something that was illegal. In reality, what they were doing was having conversations. We don't know what those are. We can assume, but there's no law against that. There's a law if you take action. Thank you.
On the heels of that, I will ask Sean to, to weigh in. So if four councilmembers get together, have coffee and discuss an upcoming ordinance that's on the, on an upcoming agenda. Is that a meeting?
That's a little more detailed than I think what Mike was getting.
I know, but.
Potentially, yes. So I think what Mike's getting at is, let's use the example of four councilmembers on a bus. Uh, and they're having a conversation about whatever. Could be city business, but it could be anything else. That's not necessarily a meeting for purposes of what a meeting is. A meeting is defined by taking action. And if you, and so if I use that example, if there's four councilmembers that are on a bus. And they're talking about an ordinance and they're talking about what they think about the ordinance and how they're going to vote on the ordinance. That would be considered a meeting. But the fact that just because they're in one spot and someone, and two of them were talking about. What do we think we should do to try to figure out this particular situation?
Yeah.
If that same dialogue comes back at the very next city council meeting, and you have that same dialogue, you're not taking action because you've had that same dialogue within another meeting, in a public meeting. You took action within a meeting. So. Just because four councilmembers or more are together doesn't mean you are violating.
Well, it's about what's discussed.
Correct. So it's all factual based as to the circumstances of where you are, but it's, it's defined based upon action that's being taken. Or if four or five councilmembers decide, hey, here's how I'm going to vote, here's how I'm going to vote, and you start counting votes within that meeting. That would be a meeting that should have been in a public meeting.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Because we, there are times when all of us are. Somewhere else, AWC or GSI or something. And I just want to make sure that was clear. Do you have any other council? I just want to make sure that was clear. Do you have any other council comments? All right.
Mayor?
Oh, yep, go ahead, sorry.
Just a quick question. Uh, we had gotten this email in from Jim Doster regarding the fencing
All right.
around the, the Liberty Lake Golf Course. Um, I'm just curious as to, um, I, I, I mean, I'm not certain there's much that we can do other than just have a conversation with the county, um, because it's a county golf course, or you.
I think I saw that. I apologize.
This was just this morning.
Oh, I don't see that anywhere.
Um, it was addressed to council, uh, oh, I guess city council members. I don't, I don't know if they've got. Okay, so.
I didn't miss it.
So yeah, I'm just, and maybe Mark can speak to this, uh, whether, whether there will be a formal response from the city, uh.
I don't know that we've received.
Can you forward that to Mark and Mike?
Okay, so, but we can have another conversation about it later.
Yes.
Because it looks like this has been ongoing since twenty twenty-two or something like that, is when he first started, uh, talking with the county regarding. They, they live on Multer. They've had some damage from the golf, golf balls, you know, everybody slicing it off to the right on that fourth hole. So, um, it, it's been a problem for, you know, as long as I've lived here in Liberty Lake, so.
We'll certainly take a look at it.
If you guys get emails like that and you notice that Mark or I aren't on them. Please, please send it to both of us.
Didn't even look at that.
No, it's okay.
The city council, I thought everybody was included.
No, I've had some trouble catching up since last week, so I was afraid I missed it, but I didn't. All right, thank you so much. All right, we have no public hearings or appeals. We are up to resolutions.
All right, council, before you, we have resolution number zero two dash four seven J, a resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending the adopted personnel policy for all employees of the City of Liberty Lake.
All right, so there were a lot, quite a few red lines. Most of them came from federal changes. Some of them look kind of strange. It looks like we're removing people that should be protected, but again, it's kind of, it's, it came from the federal, right?
So to clarify that, um, we, uh, are a, a client. We have a vendor, uh, called Associated Industries, um, who we use for a lot of, uh, different policy-related things. And so that change came from, uh, Associated Industries as they changed in response to certain things. So it wasn't a copy and paste of any kind of federal change. However, what I will say to clarify that is that the more broad a list becomes, if nothing's on there, it could be assumed that you can take action against that, and that's not what it's intended to say. So just for clarification purposes, I, I want to say the City of Liberty Lake does not discriminate, period.
Right.
Right? And then you have all of this other language in there, um, that comes from a host of different sources to clarify certain protected classes, but the city doesn't discriminate, period. And, and then we move on from there.
Right. Right. Were there any other questions on the, uh, the red lines to the personnel manual?
So, Mark, you're referring to, because I was curious about this, the citizenship or immigration status, marital status, use of trained animal, et cetera, et cetera, right?
Correct. And it, that definition starts in section two point one, and it's carried forward in some other sections. But yes, the definition that you're reading in two point one.
Yeah, it kind of made me cringe. I mean, why would they take that out? Well, you just, I mean, I know, well, I just still, I don't know.
And if Heidi is on the line, Heidi can provide some additional clarification there, just to help answer that question.
Yep. Thank you, thank you, Mark. Um, so I did actually reach out to Associated Industries, and their attorneys have opted to move, um, that sort of language. It just is ever-changing. They study case law very closely. Um, those um, classes are still protected. As Mark pointed out, it's just you can't cover every base. Um, and some places, you know, call out, um, groups that we already did not have in, so it's just kind of a preference. And for consistency, we follow Associated Industries and according to what they've seen regarding case law, that's something they have opted to remove.
Yeah, go ahead, Sean.
Let me, let me clarify something for, and I don't know the specifics of this. I can tell you just generally the circumstances. So especially in the employment arena, you have multiple cases that are coming out with different determinations that, that, you know, throughout the year and throughout the years. And so, um, when you're updating your policies, you're trying to address what cases may have been decided and implement, implement language within the policies relative to those cases. Um, you could have some different jurisdictions that have some different things that you're trying to figure out. Okay, I have to read between the lines here, because I don't know exactly what the cases are telling us, because shockingly, the courts may make a decision, but they don't tell you how to do it. So, um, you have to try to figure out a way to get the language specifically in there. So when you're writing it, you're saying, okay, we're going to cover this particular case law that says this may be an issue if we don't describe it this way, but we can't necessarily go all the way relative to this other case. So we have to work our way in, I'll call it massage the language to make sure that we're covered and/or address the issue that comes up in those particular cases. And so I think that's Heidi's comment as it relates to the attorney saying, okay, here's how we're going to try to address the issue.
Great counsel.
Thank you, Spencer.
Uh, well, a couple of things regarding that. I mean, the assumption here is that we wouldn't be in violation of any law if we hired somebody who was not a legal resident. We, we wouldn't be liable for, for something if we were to hire somebody who's here illegally, I guess is the question.
Well, their, their immigration status, they would complete nine-nine, they would have a work visa. You know, there were thing, safety measures we would put in place, but we wouldn't discriminate.
Perfect. Um, the other thing, and this is unrelated to the red line, but I, and I'm not sure why I even saw this as I was scrolling through it, because I, of course, didn't read the entire document. But, um, in, on page thirty or page one eighty-one of our packet, um, under sick leave, it says allowable uses of sick leave. Sick leave covers those situations in which an employee is ab, absent from work due to, and then if you go down to the next page, uh, on section four, it says due to exposure to a contagious disease where on-the-job presence of the employee would jeopardize the health of others, or the use of over, over counter, over the counter medication. It, that, that seems confusing to me. It seems like you could even move that use of over the counter medication to number five, uh, to join it with prescription drugs that would impair job performance or safety. Does that make sense? The use of over the counter, if you read the sentence combined with the, the page prior to, and then section four, it doesn't, if you were to use or use of over the counter medication does not, uh, make sense.
Well, Heidi will let you address that, but I just got kicked out of Zoom, so I don't know if she did too.
No, I, I'm here, sorry. I was just reading and listening. Um, I mean, I think that's definitely something I, we can look, I can look at closer, um, for the next, um, personnel manual edit. Um, just to make sure that, to see if that was actually taken over out of, like, verbatim through, um, the Washington, um, sick leave policy. Because I, I just want to be consistent if that did come from there. So I'm not sure where that came from, because that was an edit probably from two years ago.
Yeah, it may have just been misplaced. It, it seems that, that last part of that, uh, sentence in, in number four may have lived with number five at once, at, at one point. I'm not sure.
I, I, the only thing I can think, um, Councilmember Spencer's use of prescription drugs that, um, impairs. So, uh, you know, if somebody has to take like a pain medication, you know, during the day, um, that would be an allowable use of sick, um, but then a contagious disease or exposure, um, or the use of over the counter medication. So I think one's prescription, one's, you know, I don't know, I guess if I took Benadryl and it made me super tired, I could go home sick from work. But I, I think that's probably the difference, but I can definitely look into that more.
Yeah, no worries.
You, are you comfortable with making, just making sure we address that in the next edit? Thank you. Um, any other questions? All right, uh, and I don't know if, if Councilmember Kurtz has her hand up. I can't see. I'm trying to get back into Zoom.
No, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. All right, so hearing no further questions.
Do, do we have a, do we have a motion?
No, not yet. I was going to send some comments.
That's fine. I just want to make sure we have, I think we have.
Okay, we can go ahead and do that. Okay, all right. So at this point, we will open up for public comment on the resolution. Any comments will need to be on this resolution only. If, um, if somebody comments otherwise, you will be, um, you will be shut down. For lack of, we've been having some issues. Um, so at this time, we'll go ahead and I don't, if there's anybody here in council chambers who'd like to comment on this order, on this resolution, I don't see any. Do we have anybody online who wants to comment on this resolution specifically? Do we have anybody? Okay, go ahead and just remember, this comment is only for this resolution. Please go ahead and state your name and whether or not you're, whether you're a city Liberty Lake resident or not.
This is, I'm, I'm waiting for the general public comment.
Okay, nope, this is comments on a resolution. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments on the resolution? Okay. There aren't?
No.
Okay, great. All right, so not hearing any public comment, uh, we'll go ahead and take a motion, uh, for this resolution.
Madam Mayor, I move resi- resolution zero two dash zero four seven J.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion of second by Mayor Frotem. All in favor of approving resolution zero two dash zero four seven J, please say aye.
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 All right, any opposed? Not hearing any. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. All right, ordinance three zero two A, second read.
Ordinance three zero two A, an ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending ordinance three zero two, City of Liberty Lake, to include amendments to City of Liberty Lake Development Code, Section ten dash four I dash one, regarding temporary uses.
Okay, uh, Lisa, is there anything you want to plead with, or I can just go ahead, go to the council and ask if they have any questions?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify that this is just, um, cleaning up a clerical oversight in the passage of the ordinance. This was something that you recommended to be incorporated into the ordinance. It went through planning commission, it went through you, et cetera. I'm just cleaning up a little mess I made.
Thank you for owning it.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number three zero two A.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Um, again, we'll open up for public comments on this ordinance only. Ordinance number, where did it go? I lost it. There we are, three zero two A. Um, there's, I don't see any comments here in, uh, in council chambers. If there's anybody online who would like to comment on this ordinance specifically, please, uh, raise your hand and let our, let our meeting host know. Nobody? Okay, not hearing any. We'll go ahead and go to a vote. Those in favor of approving ordinance three zero two A, please say aye.
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 Any, any opposed? All right, motion passes seven zero. Okay, we are up to emergency ordinances. We don't have any. Um, introduction of upcoming agenda items, and since it helps things out, I don't think we have our spreadsheet. But I think we had things pretty much laid out through the end of April. Kyle, do you concur? Mark?
Yes, uh, pretty much. I, I do have one, uh, to talk about that we met with, uh, GMP
Go ahead.
earlier. And this is the, uh, proposed, um, retreat that we've been talking about. And so the mayor and I met with, uh, the, uh, facilitator and kind of talked about agenda, but we want to get some, um, comments from you with respect to availability. And so we're looking at a half day, right? This is a four-hour block of time that we're targeting. And so, um, we, we don't want to get too deep into the year, uh, because we're going to be talking about twenty twenty-four objectives and a little bit beyond that, but certainly want to focus on this year as part of the agenda. And so we're looking at sometime between the end of spring break, um, and the end of April, so sometime in that last three-week period of April. And so there are three successive Saturdays, um, and I should have been more prepared than I am. Uh, those dates are.
Thirteen, twenty and twenty-seven.
Thank you, thirteen, twenty and twenty-seven. And so those are possibilities. Um, there is also a possibility of targeting, uh, an off, uh, Tuesday. Um, we've already shifted our council meeting schedule, um, and so that may be a little bit more difficult. We can also pick another day during the week and have an evening session, um, as well. It's really council's prerogative, but we want to get some finalization on dates so we can get it on the calendar.
Uh, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Kennedy.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. When is, um, when does it park open up over here for Farmer's Market?
May, middle of May.
Okay, bye, thank you.
Yeah, if it were a weekend, is it a Saturday? Yes, I mean, a Saturday.
Yeah, it would have, it would have to be a Saturday based on the availability of the facilitators.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, is there any preference from anybody, Councilmember?
I, I just have a, um, conflict on the thirteenth and twentieth. So, but don't schedule it around me. I mean.
So, sorry, go.
Oh, no, go ahead. First, let me call Councilmember Dunn and Spencer.
Available on the twentieth to twelfth.
Councilmember Spencer.
Uh, yeah, I'm out on the thirteenth. I'm, I'm curious, could we even go into, into May on the fourth, perhaps? Have a Star Wars theme?
We, we absolutely can go, uh, you know, obviously, uh, we, we don't want to schedule something in September, right? Um, but, but May fourth is, is not going to be a problem, because we'll have tons of plenty, uh, on that day, as you pointed out, that we can even come dressed if you, if you want to do that.
That up to David.
Okay.
Um, would it be, would it be a lot easier to send out a doodle poll to everybody?
And, yeah, that, if, if that's the, the better way to do it, we can do that.
Yeah, put those four dates in.
If, if everybody's, we're talking Saturday, right? So we would send out four Saturdays and then we would get back.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I wouldn't be necessarily opposed to trying to do it on an off Tuesday in May either. I mean, it.
Okay, so, so we can include some of those dates as well and give you a full complement of options, and then we'll see who, uh, the, the one with everybody available, we're, we're going to pick that. So we'll let you know what that is. Okay.
Yeah, I will say, we're doing these four-hour retreats. It's really nice to come in fresh to them, you know, on, if possible, on a Saturday like that, because we're not all bogged down with everything that happened during the day, and we're not looking at our watch saying it's five till ten. Um, so just my thoughts. So let's get that pull, pull out and we'll see how it comes out.
We'll get it out first thing in the morning.
Perfect. All right, now we are up to.
Mayor, just.
Uh, go ahead.
I have one I would like to add to that is, if you reference the Kramer Parkway overpass, that traveling as much as I have, it's, it's interesting, the cities that actually have ba- badges of some sort identifying the city that is there. I think we're very unique. I don't want to go into great detail. I would like to have this added to where we can discuss this. I know that, uh, Wash Dot would be involved with something like this, but I think it'd be HOVUS when it comes to looking at economic development. There's no better way to economic development is to have on our bridge, something about the city, the Liberty Lake, golf cart, whatever the case may be, on, traveling around.
There was some background to that, and I know that there were a lot of, and Lisa can probably speak to this, there were a lot of Wash Dot rules with regards to putting anything on the bridge because it can be distracting.
Right.
So, um, let, let, give us a few weeks to circle back and we'll, and because there may, it may be prohibitive based on their rule.
This is not a big rush for me.
Okay, thank you. We'll put up TBD on that. And who was next up, Mayor?
I just want to make sure that we, um, don't forget to put the aquifer protection reauthorization on the April ninth meeting.
Yeah, that's, that'll be the resolution that comes back. You're not here that day? Okay.
On the second meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. All right, any other upcoming agenda items, uh, upcoming workshop stuff? Okay. Um, we are now up to citizen comments. I'm going to need some help because Zoom's kicked me out again. We'll have to figure that out. Um, so now is time for citizen comments. Um, so just a reminder of, of the, the rules of engagement, the time limit is three minutes. It can be any topic. We do ask everybody to be respectful of everybody here in the room and anybody else online. And, uh, you are limited, I said, limited to three minutes. This is not a back and forth with the council. Um, if there is something to, to get back with you on, we'll make sure we get your contact information. We do require you to provide your name and whether or not you are a resident of the City of Liberty Lake. Um, am I missing anything there? Okay, so, uh, we will open that up. Remember, a three-minute timer, it will be on the screen. So, uh, who do we have for citizen comments? Okay, we'll go ahead and just give us, give us your name and spelling since, uh, since, um, you don't have that, and whether you're cit- liber- citizen of the City of Liberty Lake or not, and then you'll have your three minutes.
Yeah, hello, uh, my name is Ivana Gaskykes, and I am a member of, uh, Liberty Lake. I've lived here for about eight years. And, um, I just wanted to actually. And I just wanted to actually speak in regards to some, some information I received at my doorstep and a little, it was in a little, it was rolled up. Basically, it was some flyers and they were detailing the Jewish plot to control America. And I would just like to read some of these aloud because they're very inflammatory and blasphemous and I would like us to do something about it.
Sean, we can't, we can't because it's. We can't. Keep going. Or do we, oh, we shut up. We, we can't. It's free, free speech and we can't, we're not allowed it. We can't regulate citizen comments based on that. So. We're, that's where we're watching it very closely, but we just. Should, that shouldn't have happened. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, and this might be something similar, so just be prepared. All right, Dr. Nate, please join us. Let us know you're resident of Liberty Lake or not.
Yes, hello. My name is Dr. Nathaniel Sackett. And I am a resident of Liberty Lake. My family has been here. For three generations. And tonight I would like to talk about the United States Constitution. I'd like to speak on a matter that impacts. All Americans living in our once glorious United States. Each member of this council has sworn to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. I would like to propose a resolution for this council to refine the guidelines of conduct amongst our local government officials as well. As to make an amendment to what is being taught in the school curriculum under your jurisdiction. Everyone must be aware of the Constitution and how personal feelings do not supersede the law. My ancestors fought valiantly for this right, and I do not take kindly to anyone violating our rights. There has been Supreme Court case law that has upheld the right to free speech and other constitutionally protected activities. The United States was fought for and secured by the army under the glorious General George Washington. And the laws of this land were enshrined by Congress. We have these laws for good reason. These men who happened to be alongside of my family's forbearers made great sacrifices at tremendous risk to themselves. In face of the British Empire, whom at the time was the most powerful empire on the face of the earth. These British officers would impose themselves upon the residents of America and occupy their homes during the revolution. This is why the Third Amendment to our beloved Constitution was enshrined. The British also attempted to disarm the colonists on multiple occasions so that their occupation could go over more smoothly. So they can take the opportunity of armed resistance off the table. This serves as a stark reminder to us now that the ability of brave men to organize, speak out against and take up arms against their oppressors was deliberately included in the Constitution. Again, for good reason, because those who drafted the Constitution knew that without these rights, the citizenry would be doomed to servitude time and time again with no. Manner of recourse or recompense against those who would so dishonorably subjugate them. And we have it for good reason. The great philosopher Voltaire once said. I may disagree with what a man has to say, but I will fight to the death for his right to speak his mind. This Marxist cancel culture and nurturing of children to become weaklings has led us to the current date in which we have infantilized full grones whose bodies have matured, but whom still act mentally as if they were adolescents. This must be reversed, lest we doom future generations to a life of incompetence and Stockholm syndrome. I'm saddened to inform you that once again, our beloved USA is occupied by a foreign government, one who purports themselves to be our greatest ally, but this is simply not the case. For would an ally go behind our backs to sell our weapons intelligence to China against our wishes? Would they attack our most decorated naval vessel, the USS Liberty? Would they assassinate?
Thank you very much. Go ahead and click them off. Thank you.
My time is not up.
Guess it. Three minutes. Bye, sir.
It is a terrorist state.
But can we shut him off, please? Thank you. Okay, that was fun. Okay, all right. Are there any other citizen comments waiting? Thank you. All right. So we will move on. We do have a short executive session per RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one ten one G. Five minutes.
I would say we need at least, let, let's say ten.
All right. Okay. So we will adjourn to executive session next door for ten minutes. We will be back at nine forty-one. No decisions will be made. Welcome back, everybody. We are officially re. We'll see you in a couple of weeks or three weeks.